Start, uh, we have a public hearing item which is, uh, 6:05 PM, March 19th, uh, Wednesday, uh, we have someone from, uh, Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Environmental Protection. They're up. Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jersana. I'm the Brooklyn Borough Commissioner for DEP. I'm gonna talk to you guys today about flooding, um, give you a flooding 101 presentation, um, take you through some of what DEP does, um, what we offer in your area, some updates for Bushwick, and then I'm happy to take questions. Great. We're gonna broadcast the presentation up here. Um, and I'll be reading a bit from my phone so I can see, and then happy to take questions at the end. So we can go to the next slide. If that's all right. Great. So a lot of you guys may know this, but just some background on the Department of Environmental Protection, what we do. We deliver 1 billion in gallons of drinking water every single day to New Yorkers, and then we treat that water. So after you flush your toilet, you wash your hands, you use the washer dryer, that water goes to a wastewater treatment facility, and we treat that water before it goes back, um, outside into the world. We operate 14 wastewater recovery facilities and 96 pumping stations. Um, so it's a big effort, 6,000 employees across all five boroughs, um, and we operate our reservoirs upstate as well. We can go to the next slide. Um, so I wanted to start off, I start off this presentation by telling folks that New York City was recently reclassified. So what does that mean? It means that our climate, according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, went to humid subtropical. So folks here, we all, we all know there's already been storms. Storms have always been a problem in New York. According to scientists, it's gonna continue being a problem and even a bigger problem. So what this means is, we put up a few of the recent storms up on the PowerPoint here that we can get storms that give us over two inches per hour in rainwater. And I'll get into a little bit of why this is bad, but it can overwhelm the sewer system. And so we've needed to think as a city about how we can address the fact that we're gonna have increasing storms that have rapid amounts of rainwater per hour in them. We can go to the next slide. So there's three types of flooding that I'll start, uh, talking about today. One is stormwater. That's obvious. There's like a storm, rainwater's coming from the sky. That's one way that we can flood. A second is coastal flooding, so rising sea levels. And that can be triggered by storms as well, but in general, the sea levels are rising and the coast can flood. Brooklyn has a lot of coasts, so we struggle with that as well. And then the third is groundwater. So that's over your buildings and your homes. There is water in the ground that already exists, and that can be triggered by stormwater. That can be triggered by coastal flooding, and that can also go into your basement. So all three of these types of floodings we deal with in Brooklyn, and we'll talk a little bit about how you can protect your home and what we're doing as a city. You can go to the next slide. So first, want to talk about sewer backups and overflows, which I know is something we deal with a lot in this area and that folks are familiar with. Um, so it all starts with this fact that 60% of New York City has combined sewers. So what does that mean? That means when you flush your toilet, when you do the washer dryer, when you wash your hands, that goes to the same place where the stormwater goes. They're both collected in a combined city sewer main. So when we have a big flood, when that, when that, um, system is at capacity, when it's under duress, those things can flow back up through catch basins into the street. That's when you, you have street flooding, or they can flow back into a basement. Um, obviously, that's very concerning, that wastewater and stormwater together, they come back in. Those, um, backups that can happen are really, really terrible. So we're gonna go through some ways you can protect your home and also what the city's doing to mitigate sewer backups and overflows. You can go to the next slide. Um, I just talked about this a little bit, but we want to show these pictures of street flooding, why it occurs. It's because it comes back up out of catch basins. This is why clogged catch basins are a really big problem. If a catch basin is clogged and a storm happens, um, and the catch basin cannot receive the water and is subject to backups, not good. So ca- uh, catch basins are things you can call 3114 and that DEP responds to. Um, and so just because it's blocked doesn't mean it's broken, but it means that we have to go in there and clean it, especially if there's a storm coming. We can go to the next slide. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about flooding in Bushwick. Um, this is a very old picture. Uh, flooding on Knickerbocker has been an issue since 1960. As, as I said in the very first slide, New York City has also been reclassified as humid subtropical. It's gonna continue being a problem. Um, so we can go to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit more about Knickerbocker. So this is a flood map. Everyone has access to this. If you go to New York City DEP's website, you can see areas that are specifically because of where they exist um, and because of their, their surrounding terrain that are prone to more flooding. So that blue area circled right there is Knickerbocker. It's extra, extra, extra prone to, prone to flooding. Um, and when you get rain above two inches an hour, which is what I said, those are some of those superstorms, it can see flooding of over a foot. Um, if you go to the next slide, um, we can see it's because, this is because this area is a valley, so it's a lower elevation than the surrounding area. Um, and rainwater runs downhill. So at the lowest spots, it overwhelms our sewer system, resulting in street flooding and sewer backups into homes. So we can go to the next slide. So what do we do to combat all of this? Um, the city has a toolkit to combat flooding, uh, gray, green, blue, infrastructure, and also real-time monitoring. So I'm gonna go into a bit of that, but first, I want to keep talking about Knickerbocker for a second. So if you go to the next slide, um, you can see a few weeks ago, we announced that we're investing $390 million to upgrade, upgrade the Knickerbocker sewer. Um, this is a big deal because even if we put in all the best stopgaps in the world, the sewer would have still been, um, at capacity, so it really needs permanent, permanent upgrades. And so after a lot of advocacy from folks in this room and a lot of your elected officials, um, we were able to allocate this money, and this, these upgrades are gonna affect more than 12,000 residents in Knickerbocker. So, um, that red square is the first phase of the project. The blue square is the second phase, and the green square is the third phase. So I'll hopefully be able to come back and present more on any, um, issues you need to know about when this construction is taking place and how this will work. You can go to the next slide. Um, just a little bit about the upgraded capacity. You can see that on the left is the current capacity of the Knickerbocker sewers, and that on the right is what we're gonna upgrade. So we're talking about an over 800% increase in the sewer size in Knickerbocker that should really provide relief for the community, um, and the construction starts in 2029 on that. You can go to the next slide. Uh, okay, great. So I'm just gonna talk about some other things we're doing in the area to help mitigate flooding in the interim and stuff that we're doing across Brooklyn. One is these new manhole covers. Um, they can help even when catch basins at the curb are blocked. Um, so we're instituting a bunch of these all across Bushwick and all across Brooklyn. You can go to the next slide. Um, sewers are our first line of defense, so I know I mentioned we're upgrading the sewer, and it badly needs those upgrades, and so that's very important. But just want to flag for other parts of Bushwick and in general in Brooklyn, sewers protect against 98% of events, like most events, sewers are able to handle the water flow. It's when we get above two inches per hour when sewers are at capacity and we need other areas. So DEP has a 10-year capital plan, which includes 8 billion in upgrades for Brooklyn, and like you guys just saw, 390 million, that is for Knickerbocker. We can go to the next slide. Um, green infrastructure is another thing that we, uh, construct in areas to help with rainwater. This is important because, um, rain gardens and things like porous pavement can help collect water when the sewer's at capacity. Um, so if you go to the next slide, uh, I believe we have a map here of all the green infrastructure that we put up in Community Board Four, nearly 400 rain gardens since 2015, and these will help store about 4 million gallons of rainwater in addition to the sewers. You can go to the next slide. Uh, porous pavement is another thing that we're putting in, and so it looks like concrete. You'll see people putting on, um, what looks like concrete, but if they're DEP contractors, they're putting this thing called porous pavement with, which can take in rainwater. We're gonna put in another 35 miles of Brooklyn, some in Community Board Four. Um, so that will be another great way to fight stormwater. You can go to the next slide. Um, flood net sensors, these, we are just starting to put in Brooklyn. There aren't many yet. Uh, but we have, uh, finances allocated to put 500 across all five boroughs and more accounting, and these can tell us in real time if a sewer is reaching capacity. So we can say, whoa, something's happening in Bushwick faster than el- other, other places. We can reroute our field ops team. We can reroute folks there because something seems clogged, something seems like it's not working, and we can, you know, try to be faster than 311 and, and, and the other existing systems that you have to flag to us. We can go to the next slide. Okay, great. This portion is the final kind of portion of the presentation where I just talk about what you can do to protect your home, um, knowing that a lot of these city projects take time. Um, they're big infrastructure projects. They may not be on your block. So what, what can you do in the interim to help protect your home from flooding? You can go to the next slide. So first, um, is making sure your basement is, is correct and, and, and has the most updated systems that we suggest to mitigate flooding. So one is like bathroom fixtures that are lower than your sewer connection is not great because if there's a sewer backup, it'll go first into your bathtub, your toilet, your sink, um, before going out of your sewer fixture. So trying to make sure that those things are in the correct order is very important. Um, basements that are below a driveway, basements that are lower than where you collect water, more prone to flooding, obviously. And making sure you have two exit routes in your basement, um, it's from a safety perspective, it's very important. Sometimes these storms can happen very fast. The flooding happens very fast. If someone is asleep, if someone doesn't know, it's very important that you have the correct exits in your basement. You can go to the next slide. So the downspouts, um, are very important. So on the left, you can see these are incorrect downspouts. These are downspouts that are placed in a way that sewer backups will go into your basement, whereas on the right, you can see they're faced outwards, they're a little bit higher than the basement and the fixtures, and that can make sure your water is going away from your building. So rerouting your downspouts is another great way. Go to the next slide. Um, rain barrels are great. These connect to your home's gutters, and they hold water before it gets to the sewer. This is great because like, let's say you have plants, you can use this water to water your plants. You can save this water, you know, you don't want to drink it, but you can use it to water your plants and do other things, and it helps us as a city before overwhelming our sewer system to collect stuff first. Um, and so that, I highly recommend a rain barrel. You can get them at Home Depot and lots of other hardware stores. Um, go to the next slide. Um, flood sensors, these are also things you can get at Home Depot and hardware stores, and they're good if no one, you know, lives in your basement. Let's say you're sleeping upstairs, there's a storm, and you don't realize your basement's flooding till it's been flooding for six hours. Flood sensors are great. They can tell you really quickly something's happening, so you can get your belongings out of the way. You can go to the next slide. Um, flood barriers are good for certain homes and certain basements. Um, they're small, but like I said, we're talking, sometimes we're talking about two inches per hour. So if you can even stop two inches from getting into your basement entryway, it's useful. You can put sand or other water in it, um, and so we recommend it if you have a basement where it makes sense, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. We'll go to the next slide. Um, sun pumps, these are things also that you can, uh, get at hardware stores. They remove floodwater quickly. Um, it can detect rising water when it's happening, um, and it's just great to have on hand if you know that your basement is prone to flooding. We'll take, uh, next slide. Great. So this is actually the last portion. These are just some things that would help us as DEP, um, try to prevent the sewers from getting overcapacity. Just a few little tips and tricks you can do. So if there's a big storm, it's not the best time to do five loads of laundry because it's putting a lot of taxing system onto our sewer, and our sewer's trying really, really hard to hold the stormwater. So if you can wait to use water in the middle of a storm, it's something you can do the next morning. We really ask that you do that. That would help. Go to the next slide. Um, another thing is please don't put things that are not supposed to go in your toilet, in your toilet. Um, DEP spends $18 million of taxpayer dollars a year cleaning out the sewers for this type of damage. There's no such thing as a flushable wipe. They all say flushable on them. They are not. So just put what's supposed to go in the toilet, in the toilet, um, because that helps us and that helps you. Um, we'll go to the next slide. Um, there's a few apps you can download that will help you tell when high tide is coming up or if rainfall greater than 1.5 inches is coming up. One is Tide Alert, which is, um, uh, from NOAA, which is the organization I mentioned earlier. And, um, although tides aren't the biggest thing, for this area, storms definitely are. So if you're getting an alert about 1.5 inches, that would be great, um, for you to know ahead of time. You go to the next slide. Um, also getting flood insurance, if you're able, is really, really important. Um, they can insure you for lots of damage. We highly recommend it at DEP. Um, it's, it's, it's tough when we come afterwards and we hear stories and we try to help. And, um, if the homeowner had had insurance, it would have been really, really easy for us to confirm that there was a flood in this area and for you to, um, get repaid for your belongings. So if you're able to get insurance, it's really, really great to get. And on the next slide, um, I'll talk, also, this is specific insurance for your sewer service line. Why is this important? Your service line can break for a lot of reasons. It can maybe not even be your fault. Your neighbor's service line hit your service line, whatever. I've, I've seen everything over the map. If you have to fix your service line, it is not the city's responsibility and can cost you up to $10,000. This insurance is anywhere between 15 and 20, $25 a month. So I believe we've sent out mailers about this multiple times, but I highly, highly recommend it. Service line insurance, the city is not responsible for your service line. This will really, really, really help you. Next slide. Okay, great. This is the last one, Notify NYC. I think a lot of folks here know about this, but we work closely with these folks when there's a storm, when there's a water main break, when there's something the city's responsible for, um, a lot of it can go through here. So I really, really recommend folks sign up for Notify NYC. And I think this is the last slide, if, um, the next one should say. Great. So done my presentation. Go back to the chair.
Any questions?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felix Zavallo, CB4. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, you mentioned, uh, it's a 96 pump for walk with the water. Where are the location for that pump?
For sun pumps? I think sun pumps you can get at your hardware store. Um, we do some events over the summer at DEP where we distribute sun pumps. So, um, to the extent that's happening with your council member or your community board, we're, we're sure to let everyone know. We have a fixed inventory, um, but I know we'll be doing events in Brooklyn this summer, and so I'll definitely let your district manager know when that's happening. And also you yourself can purchase one too at like a hardware store.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Hello, Stephanie Anderson, Community. Um, I have a cellar, and, um, when I, when we got our dehumidifier, they spoke of like, uh, building a kind of, um, what do you call it? A sewer si- a sewer system within our cellar, like that surrounds so that, um, somehow the excess water can, you know, doesn't have to, um, uh, surround. What do you, is that, um, is that popular to do? Is to have a, like a moat around your cellar?
I've never heard of that, um, but I always encourage like folks to work with a plumber, and if you get advice from a plumber, like our first call a lot, a lot of times, if it's like, most times flooding is not related to the city water main, is if you got advice from a plumber and there's someone who's gonna help you reroute water from your basement, like that's our first line of defense. So I've never heard of that before. I can definitely get back to you and ask our folks. Um, but I'm really happy to hear you're talking to someone about this at all, so that, that's great.
Thank you.
Hi, Christian Celeste Tate, uh, board member. First of all, thanks for coming in for the update. This is obviously really exciting and positive news for, for the community. That said, can you say more about the timeline? You said that the project wouldn't start until 2029?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming this isn't quick, so can you share more about that? And also, if we're talking about 10 years from now that this will be completed, what is planned for the flooding that will happen in the next 10 years?
I, so I started in this position six weeks ago, so I'm gonna give you my understanding, but I can definitely go back internally and get more historical info for you. My understanding is that when, for a capital project, this is quite quick, um, because it has to go through a design phase, construction phase, DEP phase, and there's DOT as well. So there's like four different agencies involved in upgrading a sewer of almost $400 million. Um, so that's my understanding, but I'll go back and check for you on any timeline updates or how this stacks up to others. And then, um, a lot of what I went, uh, over in the current presentation is our plans to mitigate current flooding in the area. So green infrastructure, gray infrastructure, blue infrastructure. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy to check and compare with other projects and get back.
Hello? May I?
I think I have to get back. I think that's when they'll start construction. I think so, yeah.
Good evening.
Question?
Spelling Community Board Four. Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent because I've had flooding in my basement. And for someone who's only been there six weeks, you talk like you're a real professional, so thank you. That's number one. I have a question. My, my plumber suggested that I have my sewer line cleaned and have a, uh, box put in?
Okay, into your service line?
Yeah. Is that?
I think it's a great idea. Like, my, like, 35% of my calls every day are folks with old sewer lines. You know, New York City has a lot of old infrastructure, and you could have bought a house or moved into a house, and you didn't know. Or, you know, it was grandma's, and you didn't know when she replaced it. And so keeping your service line up to date and getting that insurance I mentioned is like really the best thing you can do for your home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going, let me, over here, then I go over there.
Hi, Barbara CB4. The water, is that the one that's on your water bill? Or is that something different?
I think it's in-
Because you do pay, well, it's optional.
I think it's the optional one you opt into that's on your water bill, that we encourage you to purchase. Correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct. Yeah, that's awesome.
There's two. There's one that goes to the line and one that goes for the plumbing. One is $25 and the other one's 15 because I just, I had, I had a, a gavenized pipe, and I changed it to copper because it was leaking. I had an old one, and water was seeping in my foundation, and I found out that it was the, the, uh, water line, uh, that goes from the building, uh, to my house, from the street to my house. And I had insurance. I didn't pay anything. They ran the cable one day. They ran the cable right through the building. They took the old, uh, uh, gavenized pipes that we had, lead, because we had lead. Uh, we have 60 years, we own the home, and they had lead. So they put the copper pipes right through, they hook up the line, and then I had a plumber come in and do, uh, what you call a float. So your basement, uh, downstairs is there's a, a shower and a toilet. They had to put a float, just like she says, so the water don't come out, out of the bathtub or the toilet. So yes, please get it.
Well, thank you very much for being here. I'm Cecilia Fabian, CB4 member. Um, I do have a problem, I had a problem in the ba- in the ba- in the past on the basement. Uh, you talk about insurance. It's, um, flood insurance, and you mentioned another type of insurance.
Flood insurance and then insurance for your service line, your sewer service line, in case it breaks.
Yeah, well, that's what happened to me, and I did not have insurance. And it was, I hate to say this, but it was exactly when they started digging for the new building across the street. The pipes in where I'm at were all through the street to the other side.
Yeah.
They dug over there, my pipes broke because they were not, they were the all, all pipes. So when I called the city, the city came, and of course, they're gonna say it wasn't them, it wasn't me. So I had to pay, I didn't have no insurance, because me $13,000, because they gave me a few days. And if I didn't do it in a few days, they were gonna shut my water off.
Yeah, yeah.
It was horrible.
Yeah.
And definitely the insurance paid the insurance.
I'm sorry that happened.
Anyone else? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
We had, Mr. Camacho, we had one more person on Zoom.
Oh, there's some, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask a question about sewers. I'm from like the 20th century with Ralph Norton cleaning out sewers. I don't even recognize them anymore. I, I think we have catch basins now. I look for sewers where the water can drain, and I don't, I can't find them. Do they still exist? And then two, who's responsible for cleaning the sewers? Because there's a lot of debris on Broadway in London. Our trash can overflow, it rains, it's just a pool of trash. Who's responsible for that? The, uh, the, the owner of the, of the building or, or, or who?
So to, to your first question, the sewers definitely exist, and they're all DEP. Um, so if you have a clogged catch basin or there's like garbage in a catch basin, that you would call DEP for. If there is garbage on a homeowner's property, um, or something with a homeowner's sewer service line, that's the responsibility of the homeowner. Um, so I don't know if that helped, that distinction helps.
Well, it does. It's just that I just don't see the, the curbs clean. You know, there's a lot of, it's like 24 hours you wait for somebody to come, it'd be like over. But I just wanted to know whose responsibility in terms of getting a summons from sanitation, whoever, for cleaning out the catch basins, um, since we have to clean out your, our streets eight inches into the, into the, to the street. I think it's eight inches or 18 inches. We have to sweep and we're responsible for the sidewalk as well as the curb. So who'd be responsible?
Definitely ma- maintaining the clean catch basins is a, is a, is a bit that we do, we try to do. That is, it's tough for a lot of reasons, but you can always call 311. And the community board flags them to me all the time. I can help try to expedite cleaning catch basins. So that's definitely within DEP's purview, and, um, please, please continue to flag that type of issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, is Department of Consumer and Worker Protection here?
Yeah.
Are they on Zoom? Hey. You go. Jonathan?
Yes, 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 yes. I'm here. I'm just putting out the PowerPoint for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first, thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Novella. I know I was a late switch. One of my colleagues was supposed to be here, and I was only able to do this on Zoom. But yes, thank you guys for being here, but first, let me introduce you to my agency. The DCWP's mission is to protect and enhance daily economic lives of New Yorkers, to create thriving communities. Now, what does that mean? Well, we enforce consumer rights, we enforce workers' rights, and we also offer professional financial empowerment programs to help you support your financial health. With respect to financial empowerment, I'd like to talk to you about two major programs that can help you save money and achieve your financial goals. One is the New York City Free Tax Prep, and the second is the Free Financial Counseling. New York City Free Tax Prep preparers are trusted professionals that provide this service for free. Heard that correctly, guys. It's for free. Our preparers are trained to ensure and claim valuable tax credits. That means bigger refunds and more money into your pockets. These include child tax credits and earned income tax credits. Many of our city's working families and individuals, a tax return can serve as the single largest paycheck for the year, and too often, money is left on the table. Since 2022, our providers have completed more than 250,000 tax returns, saving followers more than 56 millions in fees, and receiving over 450 millions in tax return funds. To fall for free using New York City Free Tax Prep, generally, families have to have an income of $93,000 or less, and for singles, an income of $65,000 or less. However, sites may vary and offer high income thresholds. Always be sure to visit nyc.gov/taxprep and look at our maps and locations for details. In 2025, we have more than 140 sites across the city and offer a mix of different services that best serve your needs. So you got your appointment. So what are the different types of service we offer? Well, one, we have an in-person, you're able to sit down one-on-one, that's when you have more of a connection with the person, you know, especially if you have any questions. I definitely recommend, uh, more of a one-on-one. Uh, but let's say you're busy, you know, you can drop off the, your taxes and come back at a later time. I know we all have work, we have children to take care of. Uh, three, we have a virtual tax prep. You know, you're able to sit down, make an appointment, you know, it's 2025, even right now, I'm talking to you guys through, uh, through a camera. So as long as you have a internet connection, they're able to scan your documents, you're able to use the option number three. Option four, an assisted self-preparation. If you guys have a good idea how to use your softwares, but still have a couple of questions, you're able to email or call a volunteer for help. Volunteer preparers speak many different languages. We offer services in 13 languages, but if a provider does not have an onsite language capacity, they're able to use the city's contracted translation service, Language Lines, which can facilitate your appointment. The language line provides a capacity in more than 180 languages. All right, so you book your appointment. So what kind of documents do you need? Well, number one, you need your photo ID, such as the ID NYC, your tax ID, such as your security, social security number, proof of income, such as your W2 1098 or 1099, childcare expenses, which can be deducted, and make sure you have your bank account and your routing number, so you get your refunds deposited instantly, and make sure all your documents are signed. and make sure you have your bank account and your routing number. So you get your refunds deposited instantly and make sure all your documents are signed by you and your spouse. But for a full list of additional documents, please visit nyc.gov slash taxprep. Now, if you work yourself as a freelancer, a gig worker, or a small business owner, you can file your taxes annually and quarterly with the New York City Free Tax Prep that can help you all year round. In-person specialist tax prep can help you complete federal and New York State, New York State quarterly estimated tax filing. And then a one-on-one consultation or in group sessions to get personalized assistance and tools for your specific business needs. You must earn ninety-three thousand for families or sixty-five thousand or less for singles with a business expense of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or less. But beyond tax prep, you have access to free resources like workshops that can learn basics and tax filing and record-keeping practice. Tac- to a cool tool, toolkits and more like record-keeping templates and tips and also get connected to a free city services and resources to help you build assets and grow your business. There are more than a hundred-and-thirty sites in all five boroughs. To find a near, a site near you, please check, check our website, nyc.gov slash taxprep. Uh, the end of the presentation, I'll show you a, a map real quick so you guys can see, because I know there's a a good four to five location in your area. You have the right to know. Well, now let's talk, now if you elect to use a paid preparer, you have the right to know. A tax preparer must tell you if you're not, if they are not an attorney or certified public accounting. If they're not, they need to have a sign stating their name, address, phone number, and relevant qualifications. The tax preparers must have a sign listing the tax preparation service they offer, the price of each service, and any additional fee charge. A tax preparer cannot require you to use a refund application loan, refund advance loan, refund advance, I mean refund application check or any refund transfer or similar products. Which means you'd not have to pay now, pay the service later's and a lot of these have a high interest rate. So remember, these are, these are loans, these are not instant refunds. Tax preparers must represent you or provide representation on an audit unless they have a sign posting that they will not represent you. Now, before, before you pay the tax preparation service, you have the right to receive a written estimate of the total cost of each service offered by the tax preparer, including basic filing, interest rate, RAL, RAC, or any refund transferring processing fee and any other related charges. A written estimate how long you can expect a way for your refund based on the selected method of payment. And a written estimate of the interest rate on your RAL loan. Now, it is illegal for a tax preparer to actually sign a blank or incomplete tax return or alter a tax return after they have, you have signed it unless you're getting a written consent. Charge a fee based upon the amount of tax you owe or the refund you will receive. Guarantee specific a refund amount or guarantee that you will not be audited by the government tax agency. Review any personal information to any person or business other than you or your authorized designing unless it's a court order or by law. Now, before I go down to the second program, I do want to remind everybody that these, this program is free and it's regardless of your immigration status, because trust me, I've paid a regular tax preparer and it'll cost me a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-eighty, two-hundred. All depends on, on, on the, on the tax preparer. And these are free, so please take advantage of these tax or free tax preparers. Now, I'd like to talk to you about our financial empowerment centers. These are locations where you can go and meet with your own personal finance counselors. On our free financial counseling is available to anyone over eighteen who lives or works in New York City. No income or immigration status restriction. Operate citywide across in thirty in-person sites. Now, when you meet with your financial counselor, the first thing they'll ask you is, what are your goals? For example, you're looking to repair credit, you're looking to save up a purchase. Do you need help tackling some debt? From there, they'll develop an assessment of your financial health and how we can work with you to achieve your goals. With a financial counselor, you'll be able to develop a short-term and a long-term goal, uh, plan to achieve your goals. These includes creating a spending plan, getting connected with safe financial products, or contact lenders on these debts. So these programs, you get to talk to you, these free financial counselors and they'll help you out with any, any debt, you have any big purchases coming up. You know, they could definitely con- they could definitely take you to uh, other providers that can help you with any debt. But definitely please take advantage of this, uh, it's, it's free. And I can mention anybody over eighteen and if you live or work in the city. The Financial Empowerment Center expands into NYC Department of Small Businesses Services, Workforce One Centers. Last year, have the largest expansion, expansion in the center since the program inception in two thousand and eight. This expansion aims to serve four thousand clients, serves SBS workforce development programs and are only available to workforce one clients. Now, this is our contact, you can call us, uh, two-one-two four-three-six zero-one-eight-six. Our email, communityfairs@dcwp.nyc.gov. Our website, nyc.gov slash DCWP, and our social media at HelloDCWP. And before my timeline's out, I do want to show you guys the map. If you will allow me to. There you go. Think you guys be able to see the map right now? And just right here, see one, two, three, four, five, six, right here nearby. You're able to book your appointment by scheduling or making a phone call online. And it'll tell you the language, English or Spanish, but every other site may vary of the language. Majority here do speak England and Spanish, but you can go see here, a little bit more that, a little bit more south, you see Haitian Creole. Alright, I'm here to take any questions, and anybody have at this moment?
Thank you, anyone have?
Hello, Felix de Bio CB four. Um, I want to know, uh, thank you for those information, very important for the community. I want to know, uh, when the year start, when people they are ready for do the tasks, why is the time you available for, for do it? And also, if you can, uh, talking more about your different location, please, thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you repeat that one la- one more time?
If you can, um, uh, talking, uh, a little more about your lo- your different location. And I want to know when you are available for es- start to do uh, the job for, for, uh, do the tasks for the people, thank you.
Oh, to do, to, to be a tax preparer, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
When people, when the people, they ready for in, in the year for do the, the tasks.
Yeah, yeah, norm- normally the Yeah, so for, if you want to be a tax repair volunteer, the, the time of the year is normally November, October, November to sign up for these programs. But these services are right now available if you go to the map and go to one of these places and do your taxes. And just a reminder, April fifteenth is the deadline for the taxes. But you can always go to our website, nyc.gov slash DCWP to, to sign up as a volunteer.
Hello, Stephanie Anderson CB four member. Um, can you go over, um, just briefly the information about filing as a small business?
Yeah, I'll go back to the.
You briefly mentioned it.
Yeah, I'll go back to the PowerPoint real quick. Yeah, so for businesses, if you earn ninety-three thousand or less for families or individuals that earn sixty-five thousand or less and that has a, a business expense of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or less or eligible, eligible for these programs. But you can always call the, the tax center and, and see if you're uh, they'll, uh, they'll take you, because sometimes it varies depending on the location.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? If none, any on our Zoom, Kim?
Uh, one last thing.
This is a portion.
One last thing, uh, if you do, for self-employed, you have the options here, uh, if you can see my map. It's uh, the yellow and it's a little bit more smaller, but you'll definitely have locations nearby. Like in downtown Brooklyn for self-employed. But that's all, but other than that, there's different locations around the city where you work or where you live.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our public hearing item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, first roll call, please sign in if you need to sign in. Also, there's going to be food available there for the board members first. And please, if you're taking them, be quiet. Then at the end, if anyone uh, wants any, if there's less, they'll give us, thank you. Celeste first roll call, oh, got somebody signing.
Isa Abney, Stephanie Anderson, Joanna Bennett, Maqiba Brown Elaine, Robert Camacho, Felix Alvinna Davis.
Present.
Got you, Alvinna. Karina Dodd is resigned. Cecilia Fabian, Freddie Fowler, Joanna Fuentes Singh is excused, Jason Gears is excused.
Present on Zoom.
Oh, got you, Jason, thank you. Anne Guiney, Zachary Hendrickson, Deborah Hicks.
Yeah, present.
Tanisha Honeygan.
Present.
Barbara Jackson. Barbara, are you present? Alright. Kaysha Johnson, Verdi Jones, Tara Jones Thomas, Luisa Jose, Christine Malden, Freddie Madison, Alex Moreno is excused, Ramika Nichols Barnes is excused, Zuma Novoa.
Present.
Raul Rubio, Elise Ruiz, Milagro Sanval, Annette Spellen, James Stewart, Christian Tate, Ben Tucker, Jerry Valentine. Linda Whitfield is excused.
Present, Celeste, present, this is Jerry.
Got you, thank you, Jerry, got you. Alright. That I believe to my count without folks that have not signed in yet is twenty board members present, which constitutes a quorum. Thank you, everyone.
Alex, acceptance of the agenda, previous agenda. Can I get a? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carried. Assumption of the previous, uh, meeting minutes? Second by Chris. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carried.
Just to make sure, folks on Zoom, that was for agenda item number two, Annette Spellen made the motion, Felix de Bio seconded, it was in favor. And for agenda item number three, that was Joanna Bennett that made the motion and Ben Tucker seconded, in favor.
And uh, number four is a chairperson's report. Uh, I went to a lot of meetings on Thursday, the twentieth. Uh, as you know, uh, we had, uh, having problems with heating. Uh, thank you staff, uh, Kim, Adalina, Celeste, I know, uh, it's been cold, uh, last week and we were having issues uh, with the boiler. Uh, so I had went a couple of times there and I let, uh, Doc, uh, the person in charge know, Igue that this is unacceptable, that we can't have this in the bottom. Uh, what happened was the boiler went out. They tried to fix the second boiler. The second boiler had issues. There's four boilers in that building. It's a it's in desperate need repair, that building. It's a city-owned building. And we want to make sure that uh, they take care of it. Uh, so like that, we don't lose the building that we had there for years. So, you know, with real estate like that, that's all we need. So uh, we fought hard, so they wasted a little money on the they put two central air conditioners and two heating. So we got our own heating now. They removed the air conditioners that we had in the window. So hopefully, we're good to go. We got our own heat, so downstairs can be cold. And we can have our own operation upstairs. So we made him waste a little money, he wasn't happy, but uh, in order for him to keep getting, uh, our money, we want to make sure that uh, as you know, ours, uh, some of our staff members are unioned. And uh, we don't want to get no grievance and any complaints. Because then, um, we will be sanctioned and, you know, the borough board president, the borough president might come after me somehow, I don't know. We a- and say we're not doing our job. I also, uh, we also, I also received an email from the Attorney General. Yeah, the Controller Union that we're no longer terminated our survey, our audit. They terminated our audit, so I thought they were firing us or something. They said that it was terminated, it was good and we passed our audit for four years, so thank God for that. It was a I called Celeste, she called me, I told her, I didn't understand what this mean. And she said she didn't, so she got some questions and answers and then she said, I thought I was getting fired. I said, so did I, I'm not getting paid and I'm getting fired. So she starts laughing, I says, yo, this is serious, you know, imagine going to the board, we need to pass the audit, forget about it. So yes, we passed four years, so you got another four years, so whoever takes after these two, get those four years is responsible. So remember, I passed. So the next person that come here, if you fail, we gotta go after them, alright? So let's keep it real. Uh, also that same day, I had the Build the Block meeting. Uh, Sector Charlie, uh, the, uh, Public Library, we gotta get involved in our Sector Char- on our, our Build the Blocks. Because that's the location where we can get some of our concerns in some areas and some sectors. Instead of coming here, uh, we can address some of the concerns over there in each sector, because every sector is different in its own way. Each sector has its own officer, they give them their cell. They can keep it anonymous, because I know a lot of people like, you know, they like to talk about Joe next door, but they don't want to say Joe's name or where he lived. But they want to be anonymous and they want to complain. But when PD go over there, then they're like, oh, wait a minute, why they call PD on me? So we rather make sure that if you go to the Build the Blocks, you can speak to the officer that's in that area and get your concerns and issue taken care of. If not, then you can come to us and we go directly to the boss and find out what seems to be the problem. And we'll find out what's going on, but we really need to fix these Build the Blocks. We also need the captain also when he does his presentation to make sure that we get the dates on time. So like that, you guys got enough time to put it in your calendar and put it in. And, and, and follow up. If you're not going, say, yo, listen, this sector, we have, these are issues that are going on. Maybe you can address some noise or, or loud, or loud club or, or maybe, uh, kids that coming after school creating up, so we really need to address, because they also have uh, youth officers that they go to the schools when they're coming out. So if there's issues there, we really need to go to these Build the Blocks. So wherever it is, there is then that, uh, Friday, the twenty-first, uh, we was in elective, uh, meeting with Riseborough again in regards to some of the they're making a lot of changes in Casa Posiba, some of the tenants, they trying, as you know, they're not they're, they're not, uh, there's a new CEO, there's new people coming in. So they gotta get to know the tenants and make sure they service the tenants and make sure that they're up and up. So hopefully they call us, we haven't had anything as of now, but if I do, uh, we'll follow up. Uh, that same day, at six o'clock, I went to, uh, three-thirty for uh, Hinrod Street, the darkroom, that young man that came to the committee. It was nice, thank you board members that went, yeah, I said, yeah, I was going. I went, I went that night. And I, I, I realized that the young man that came to the committee, I knew his mother, I knew he, I knew him when he was a baby, but I didn't know it was him. And it was so funny because he told me where he live and I told him my sister lived next, next door. And she says, oh, with the two kids, and says, yeah, that's my sister. She says, oh, I said, how's your mother? I didn't know she had passed away. He was a baby. Now he's a grown man and he lives, thank God, he, he, his apartment is good and he's, he's there and he's doing the right thing. Now he's a grown man and he lives, thank God, he, he, his apartment is good and he's, he's there and he's doing the right thing. He takes pictures of the people in the area. So it was good. We went there. They had some wine, you know, I don't drink, but there was some wine there and it was pretty good. And some crackers and stuff. So it was really nice to have a young kid that we knew that lived in this community all his life, doing positive things and, you know, in regards to things. And I seen them the other day. He came by the house. Oh, wow, this where you live? I says, yeah, now you know, come by. So we've got to encourage these kids to do the right thing and he's doing. He takes care of the seniors in that building too. There have been seniors there that lived there 80 and 90 years in that building. Imagine. So uh, Monday, the 24th, uh, the Youth and Education Committee, Tuesday, the 25th, uh, six o'clock, Housing, Land Use and Economic Development. Wednesday, uh, went to uh, the ribbon cutting funding ceremony with uh, Councilwoman Sandy Nurse. Thank you, thank you, thank you. 300, let me say right, 390 million dollars for Nicaragua for the flood. 390 million dollars. That's some work. That's some money, man. We could do a lot of things with that money, but that's, that's, that's for those people that homes were flooded. That bought new homes, some of the new people that bought new homes and didn't realize that he put the insurance that Bushwick is not a flooded area. All of a sudden, now it is. So, and then some insurance don't even want to give you flood insurance. So, and it's so high. So I know you said that get your flood insurance, but a lot of people don't want to pay, don't, don't want it. And then you got a lot of seniors that are on a fixed income. So maybe we can talk to our council person, elected officials, that if they do get it, that there should be some subsidies for weaken, offset whatever it is in regards to the flooding, because as you know, our homes, it was so hard for us in 60s and 70s and 80s for Latinos and blacks to buy a house. Now that we got the house, it's so hard to keep and maintain, because we don't make the money that we used to make. And our youth and our kids grow and they can't afford to live somewhere where they were born and raised. And it's something that we all have to think about, all of us. So we really need to be together, make sure that everyone that lives in Bushwick can continue to live here. So that's a key. Also, um, Thursday, the 27th, uh, at 10 o'clock, uh, me and Celeste met uh, with our Borough President. She'll speak in regards to some of the things that we were talking about, uh, term limits, as you know. Also, uh, inquiring about uh, headquarters where district managers can get their complaints and concern issue instead of going to 500 people and getting nothing. So hopefully, we're, they're working on that. Celeste is, is, is on her side job and not getting paid, making sure that the district managers uh, uh, get their due diligence in regards to services and city agencies and make sure that together, we all 18 community boards can make sure that we all uh, can make sure that we have the services and, and to cover ourselves and help the community in any way we can. So uh, I also wanted to thank Celeste for that. On the 6th, I'll give you my uh, report in regards to District uh, Service, uh, the District Office Committee, uh, Friday, the 20th, at 10:30, uh, Riseborough Breakfast at 1875 Broadway. Uh, that same day, uh, from 1 to 3, uh, as you know Detective Robinson. Uh, we did a walkout, 26 years in that precinct, an officer. So it was Detective Robinson. She worked at the borough. She worked in the A3 for a long time. So we send off, um, it's sad to see good people go that we know, but they gotta move on. Also, on March 4th, at 6 o'clock, uh, Borough, uh, the Borough Board Meetings, uh, we met. Uh, and there on the agenda was a, um, welcome call, approvals on agenda, the minutes, Borough Hall and Board uh, Members Update, unfinished business, Communication Report. So that day, i- i- it's so funny that I, I, I took the, the, the train there. And you know, you get, if, if you get a halfway fare, if you come back before 2 o'clock, it'll be free. So it was funny, the meeting was so fast, that I went there, when I got on the bus, it was free. I said, wow, the meeting should be that fast all the time in Borough Hall. Uh, hopefully, I'll let the Borough President know that. I didn't pay it going back, because it was a free transfer, because I, I had less than two hours. And the agenda was, and it's a kind of funny Borough Boards Bylaws Committee. So they created the Borough Board Bylaws. There is a Borough Board Bylaws. This is the first time. And it hasn't been updated since January 24, 1977. That's the day of the blackout, so if everybody remembers, uh, all right? So 1977. So there is a committee being formed to update, to update these bylaws. So there, there, there are wordings there that no longer, and jobs that no longer people do. So hopefully, we can uh, fix some of these things that aren't there and also add uh, to the meetings in regards to uh, the Borough Boards and what uh, the Borough and the boroughs need in general. Uh, also, at the 5th, uh, CB4 Executive Board Meeting. At, at the Board Meeting, I don't know, I don't, there are several things that we spoke about. I think I'll just fill in some points. We, uh, the committee recommended that uh, and I'm going to add the, add, add, add the recommendations, that we uh, give our district manager a, a raise, a 3 point uh, percent raise in her salary. They haven't had one since the last mayor. Uh, everyone uh, that's on there is higher. I don't know if she's still behind, but there's no way that we can catch up. Uh, they're young, there's money in. I'll find out. I know I may say, let's call someone, because she can't do it. They have to speak to me. So I sent the email. They haven't gotten back and to find out uh, the budget and what we can and can't do. So I'm trying to figure out uh, how are we gonna go upon it with uh, OMB, Office of Management and Bud, Office and Budget and Management. Okay. So I have to find out if there is, how much there is. We don't want to send no money back. We want to use whatever we got. So we keep telling you, we are the only ones, they take away money. Some community boards uh, got a lot uh, back and lost. So we want to make sure we use everything. I also uh, let the staff know, take their days. We're not gonna do accumulate days and roll over days, then when they retire, you gotta pay 300 or something hours. It's close to a year's pay, and then we can't get nobody to fill that job. So I'm requiring, I'm letting them know, take your days. I'm not rolling nothing over. If you don't take it, it's on you, but we need to take those days. You need some time off. And I want them to come back and be fresh and ready to rock and roll. So I want to make sure that that's key. Use their days. Don't be like some of us that saved those days and when we're 70 or 80 years old and still working, you lose all of it, because some people I know pass away and don't get to use what they have. So take advantage, especially if you're young, take advantage of going out and taking care of that, because I know Celeste, all the time going out, she's going someplace. I don't know where, but she's always leaving. Uh, March 11th, Tuesday, for 1 to 2, Hope Garden Community Center Advisory Board. There is an advisory board. Uh, there was a thing on the gen, on the agenda that I was really concerned about this advisory board and about uh, uh, DYCD, Department of Youth and Education Services that fund uh, the center there. They indicated that in regards to their RFP, that they're not in compliance with 70 or 80 kids from within NITRA. So I'm like confused, because this is not NITRA. This is no longer NITRA. So if they're not in compliance and they're not giving that money, or they're requiring them to get people, I know we got people uh, uh, from Hope Garden on the Executive Board in, in uh, Hope Garden, and we're gonna link them with them and find out why aren't the youth in there and get them all in there, instead of being outside in the yard and the backyard. And bring them in there and make sure that they're from the Rad Conversion, not from NITRA. Because Hope Garden is no longer NITRA. They own the place and they own the land, but DYCD is not giving them a, 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 a rating, because they don't have kids from within the development. But this is not NITRA, so we're gonna have to sit down and call NITRA and find out what is it that they want from Hope Garden, which is a separated, which is the Bushwick uh, Coalition that runs the, the program there. So they said they wasn't compliant, that they have to pick up people from NITRA, and I said, this is not NITRA. So hopefully, we'll find out what's going on with that. Also, I was uh, that day was permit and license. There's recommendations on there. On the 3/18 on Tuesday at 6 o'clock, the A3 precinct uh, council, the, the the captain, the deputy inspector, I'm sorry, is here. He'll give his briefing update and we'll speak to that. On the 19th today, I, me and Celeste went to a ribbon cutting ceremony. San Nick's Alliance is has a big building that they just purchased. It's theirs. Is there, you know, when you do a lot of politics, you know, you get anything you want. So, so they have a workforce development in there, in their programs that they're gonna have. It's gonna be tech, technical and digital literacy, green, green trading, construction environment, ESOL registration. I don't know what that means. Thursday, job, okay, English is second line, okay, got it. Job, uh, job club and finance services and healthcare training. There are also other skill programs that they have that just opened up. The area is 92 throup, right behind Wood Hall. It's a triangle. They used to be there. That building was empty back. They got that building. That's theirs. So we got youth or seniors that need stuff, uh, healthcare, patient care, technical certification, nursing assistant, uh, uh, technical service, job clubs, any bring them there. And I told them, we're gonna be bothering them and everybody, there's no excuse anymore, that there's no job. It's gonna be training. They're gonna be certified and when they gain the money, the funding's there, let's put the dollar, uh, put the, let them work. Also today, it was so, it was great. I got there late. I got yelled at at the A3 precinct council, but I got there. It was so good. The day, they were even singing church songs in the precinct in harmony and taking care of everybody. Think about that. In the clergy council. This is the clergy council in the precinct. They were praying for these officers, giving them worship and everybody hand to hand. It was like, I got baptized all over. And I told them, I says, they says, oh, why? I says, well, I'm leaving now. I'm sorry I'm late, but I'm gonna do my due criminal activity. I already got blessed. I'm gonna go outside and do what I gotta do. And next time I do something, I come back for you. Guys can bless me. It was so funny, uh, uh, clergy, uh, clergy there is Bishop Clark. Uh, Bishop Clark's been there for years. That thing was packed with uh, with churchgoers. That thing was, I couldn't even believe it. Had at least 40 people there, at least in that precinct. So that, to show that the captain is out there, that the deputy inspector, I'm sorry, because everybody keeps calling him captain. Deputy Inspector is out there making sure that together, our schools, our churches, our community, our businesses are all on the same page. So that is my report at today's meeting here. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Camacho, my question is on, on the one about uh, job, training jobs. Where exactly is that? I have a high schooler that needs a job.
I'll give you the fly 96 throup, please. It's uh, San Nicholas Alliance. That's their building. The money's there, the funding is there and uh, they can get, we can get our kids in there. We need to get everybody in there, because it's right across the street. It's on, right on Flushing and True. 96 True. You go there.
Mr. Camacho, 92.
No, I'm sorry, 92 True. Is it 90? Yeah, 92 True. Can't miss it, right in the triangle. Uh, uh, they have a brand new building there. We were just there. They did a ribbon cutting ceremony. All the elected officials were there. So we want to make sure that we get uh, some of the jobs and some of the training and the certification that they get it. There's gonna be classes there and everything, so. Yeah, I don't think so. They never mentioned any age requirement. I know there's jobs there also for home attendants that they're training and certifying. Uh, technician training, uh, healthcare training, business and finance training. So it's all here. I think uh, if you want, Celeste, I'll give these to Kim and send it to you guys. I can put it in a email. I think you have one too. I don't know, but I brought it. I brought one that they gave me and make sure that uh, we can work with them and make sure that our kids uh, get whatever they need. Any other question? Concern, anyone on Zoom?
I have two points of information. Um, in reference to the Workforce Development Center, it is truly a beautiful building. There were a lot of stakeholders there today. And I think it really speaks to the community collaboration of all of those organizations, the elected officials. Uh, we have a history of doing that within Bushwick and it'll be great to see both the collaboration between our community and theirs. Uh, the leadership from Community Board One was there as well, so we joined them. And uh, this is the new center. Some folks may recall, it used to be on Broadway. I believe it was 790 Broadway. So that center has closed and this has replaced that center. So 92 throup is the address.
And anyone else that has a need or wants something, please go, please. Take it. We're not, we're not bringing them home. So don't tell me y'all guys are gonna die, so get on that line.
All right. All right. We will move on now to the introduction of elected officials, representatives. If you can come forward, name and contact information only. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Elected officials and representatives. Yes, introductions.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, Jonathan Ben Court here, representing Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez. Phone number 718-599-3658.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Fran. I'm here for Councilmember Sandy Nurse, uh, 718-642-8664.
Hi, everyone. Lacey Tauber, Office of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, 718-802-3894.
Good evening, everyone. Maria Valdez from the Office of Senator Julia Salazar, phone number 718-573-1726. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kimberly Vega from Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez' office, our number 718-963-3141. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all. And Jonathan, go ahead on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Pombosa, representing the Office of Brooklyn District Attorney, Eric Gonzalez, and our number 718. Oh. Can, can you hear me? Hello.
It looks like there might be a sound issue, Jonathan. We can always come back. All right. You can drop the info in the chat for now and we'll come back. Next, we have agency representatives, community-based organizations and businesses. Please come forward, name and contact information only. Agency reps, community-based organizations and any businesses.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, Bushwick Housing Independence Project. Our contact is 929-324-7358. Email bhip, B-H-I-P, organized@gmail.com.
Hello, everyone. Cerelo Nunez here.
Hey.
Uh, good to see so many old friends. Uh, I was, I was on the board, uh, 14, 15 years. Good to be back. Uh, today I'm representing uh, Bushwick Sports and Recreation. It's a not-for-profit uh, uh, organization here in the community. Uh, we're taking registrations for in-house baseball, travel baseball, soccer.
Name, name and contact, name and contact for now.
Okay. Uh, if you need more information, you can reach us at 347-388-8271. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Varun Kataria from Xanadu and from the Turks Inn. I just wanted to give you my uh, contact information. It's V-A-R-U-N, my first name, at X-A-N-A-D-U dot N-Y-C. My phone number is 612-867-0809. And I'd like to invite you all to come to Xanadu, check it out. We have free skate passes that we're gonna be passing out to invite people to come and check the space out. We'd love to welcome you in. Thanks.
Hi, uh, my name is Cecilia Fabian. I'm CB4 member. I am an owner, business owner in the area. I'm inviting everybody. I am between Menahan and Bleecker, 963 Bushwick Avenue. Um, I do a lot of handwork, a lot of handmade stuff.
Name and contact only. Name and contact only.
So come by. Um, I also wanna invite a few friends that might wanna come and work at the park cuz I am part of the park. So it's Chila, it's Chila, C H I L A F O R, if you win, Chila for fun. Um, by me.
Thank you. And, Nalisha, go ahead on Zoom.
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Oh. Oh, okay, so it looks like we, we're not gonna be able to hear anyone on Zoom right now, but we, we will come back, folks. Just, just drop the info in the chat and we'll still have announcements later. And if we can, we'll try to get you shortly. Thank you for being here. All right, let's see, what do we have next? We, yes, eight three. Yeah, so it's only, so we can't hear folks on Zoom, but they can still hear us. So we can keep things moving and always circle back. And next we have on the agenda, the eight three precinct commanding officer, Deputy Inspector David Poggioli.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you as always for the invite to come out and join everybody here. Um, before I get into it, you know, a couple of things that Mr. Camacho said that, uh, you know, hit home and I just wanna reiterate a couple of them. First, three hundred and ninety million dollars, you're right, we could have a good time with that. How he said it about the DEP funding, um, and then builder blocks, right? If you remember last month, we actually brought our neighborhood coordination officers from Sector Charlie here to introduce themselves and speak at the, this venue to speak about their upcoming builder block meeting. So our next builder block meeting is gonna be in Sector Adam and that's going to be on March twenty-seventh at six o'clock at twelve eighty-eight Hancock Street. Um, and, and the reason I bring this up and we highlighted on social media is because these builder block meetings with, you know, we're looking for additional attendance in the same way Mr. Camacho put it out there because, um, it, it builds another forum, right? It, it gives us another venue to get together and, and kinda just bring issues to the forefront that they're brought directly to the neighborhood coordination officers who in turn, right, could devise strategies to go out and deal with the, the concerns and conditions that, that are brought forward. You know, we meet, whether it's our community council meeting, our clergy council meeting, the community board meeting, you know, we speak on the, the community board cabinet meeting and, and there's always a conversation regarding these things. But why not take the opportunity of this venue that's offered up quarterly to come in and engage with these neighborhood coordination officers? Um, we're gonna continue to push out this message in person. We're gonna continue to push out this message on our social media outlets, but we do, we, we are looking for that engagement. Um, because if it's a resource that, that's not used, like, we all understand what happens to those things over time, right? If this, if they're, if they're viewed as not useful and no engagement, then maybe one day they may no longer be around, right? And it's kinda like a missed opportunity. So I, I know this community stands at the forefront in, in engagement, so let's take advantage of these opportunities. Like I said, March twenty-seventh, uh, at six o'clock, twelve eighty-eight Hancock Street. So before I continue, um, you know, another thing he had mentioned was today's clergy council attendance. You're right, I think we were over like forty attendees and at our community council meeting last night, we had about fifty-two people attend. So that, that's, you know, that's over a hundred people that sat down with us over the past forty-eight hours to, to do this, to sit down and, and speak and continue the dialogue. Um, and, and it's tremendous because, right, like, we see it in, in the decrease in, in crime in Bushwick in our numbers. And I'll get into that momentarily, but that's again why we push the builder blocks and we push these conversations because everybody here, right, as a resident, as a business owner, traveling through Bushwick, like, those are additional eyes and ears of that view, what's going on, street level conditions that could bring to us, which we could then more precisely deploy our offices and deploy our resources. So let's continue to engage and let's continue to build on these forums that are together. And, and speaking of that, you know, our field training officers, if you remember back in January, the command was assigned eight additional police officers out of the police academy and then they were temporarily transferred to the transit bureau, right, into the subways for some omnipresence down in the subway system. Effective March first, they've been returned to the command. So I'm very happy about that. The command is very happy to have the additional resources back into the command and, and now they're gonna be deployed to footposts, right, where we see some of the, the issues that are brought up here. Um, Wykoff Avenue corridor, right, the Nikabaka corridor and Myrtle Avenue. We have eight offices, they'll be deployed into four separate footposts along those avenues. They'll be working from five thirty at night to two in the morning, Thursday through Monday. And my, my ask today is the same thing that I spoke of yesterday. You know, when you're making your way up and down those avenues and you see those new offices, like, let's show them, um, the relationship that, that we all have together and how we continue to work together and go up and introduce yourself and let them know where you live or where you may work and that you're happy that they're a part of this command and, and more importantly, this community now because that's what we're looking to enlist them. So last meeting, last month, right, couple of issues that were brought up that I would just wanna bring an, an update to. So one thing we spoke about was something that was actually became somewhat media-worthy and that was, um, vehicles parked blocking fire hydrants, right? I know it was an issue brought up in the command i- in this actual forum here last month. So we, we took that information and, you know, our summons enforcement has been consistent, but what did we do to engage beyond summons enforcement and to multiply resources? We actually had tow trucks accompanying us, uh, on a day last month and we went out into the streets of Bushwick and, and towed vehicles that were actually sitting on hydrants. Now, i- is it the end all to be all? No, like, because it is a labor-intensive process with removing the vehicles from the street, getting them down to the Brooklyn Navy Yard and then having the tow trucks return to the community. But it's a start and, and, and it's moving the conversation in the right direction. It's something, like I said, highlighted in the media, something brought up here. So, so people sitting here now deserve that update. They deserve to hear that responsiveness from the police department and that's what I want to bring that here and just let everybody know. It's gonna, we're efforts that will continue, but again, going back to our social media, it's something I make sure to highlight on that, right? When something is brought here, you know, I may not be in front of you here in this forum for another thirty days, but in the interim, as you review, you know, our various social media outlets, you'll see that, you know, as you're scrolling through. So actually, you know what, they actually went out there and took care of what I asked them to take care of. That's important to me, you know, so that's important to the personnel that I work alongside of. When someone brings us an issue, when someone brings us a condition, i- it should never be felt that it's fallen upon deaf ears. Something else that's been a longstanding conversation in this room is, is some of the food truck activity along Wykoff Avenue. And, and it's been a constant battle, right, with engagement in, in other city agencies to, to really go up there and, and to finally clear some of the landscape up there and, and really what's doable, right? And, and what's due to those business owners because they are, they're paying their rents, right? They're, they're paying their overhead, they're paying their staff, that they're enlisting people in this community and employing them and giving them jobs. So they're entitled to, to conduct their business appropriately. So those food trucks that were out there were, thanks to sanitation, thanks to the Department of Health. We went out there on March sixth, there were several summonses issued. There's about four or five conveyances removed off, off of Wykoff Avenue and then there was additional convey agencies that were issued closure orders. So it looks, uh, a lot, lot better. I actually point that out, thank you. You know, I point that out to Mr. Camacho and to Celeste because that's their job, right? A- as the community board, i- it's incumbent and inherent on them to bring community complaints to city agencies. And, and now it's my job as the precinct commander to try and quarterback the response with engaging with our partners. So my thanks is Department of Sanitation, my thanks to the Department of Health for joining us out there. And, and just like I spoke with the fire hydrant topic, you know, my message here is the same. The maintenance must, must continue. I, I think now the field training officers that we're getting back, that are gonna be deployed on foot to that same portion of Wykoff Avenue is gonna help maintain our footprint. And what do we do? We'll just reengage with these agencies and, and go back out there and, and continue the, the work that we started. But there's definitely, you know, been a very, very noticeable difference in just the layout. You know, you could stand on Flushing Avenue, you could stand on Jefferson Street now and look southbound along Wykoff Avenue and, and, you know, the perspective and the view is much, much different. So our work there will continue as well. So I'll briefly hit some of the crime statistics and then I'll open up the questions. You know, I always lead off with like our crime decreases locally here in Bushwick, right? And I speak about our year-to-date and, and the, you know, previous month and the previous week and so on and so forth. But I, I wanna kinda put that in perspective i- in our comparison to the overall crime decline in New York City itself, right? We understand five boroughs, there's eight or nine geographical patrol boroughs, uh, eight point three million people and the city has really done a phenomenal job overall and the department has driven down crime in the city of New York, uh, uh, close to thirteen percent for the year-to-date. So what does that mean for Bushwick? Well, I say, so if, if that's kinda like the starting point, right, like that, that, that's your Mendoza line, let's say, of crime decline in the city of New York, which stands at a, a decrease of thirteen percent. What does Bushwick stand year-to-date? Bushwick stands at a decrease of thirty-three percent, right? So let, let, we have to, that, that has to be part of the conversation, right? Because I cannot just continue to put numbers in, into the universe and say, oh, well, what does that really mean? Well, it means a lot when you're at thirty-three percent and, and the rest of the city as an overall stands at thirteen percent. And the reason I highlight that and, and it's exact message that I spoke of last night in our community council meeting is that, you know, when I stand in front of the community board, council, whatever may have you, you know, I, I don't look at it a- as either sides of the room, right? It's one room, it's one message, it's one collective effort from all of us. Uh, I continually put my gratitude out there to everybody who takes time and attends these venues and these forums because you make my job that much easier with just the constant communication of what you bring to me. And as always, um, thank you. I do wanna say that, thank you. A couple of things I do wanna speak about though, even with a thirty-three percent decrease in crime over the year, there's still small clusters of, of, um, locations of possible crimes taking place or just incidents we review as we analyze what we see on a daily basis. So robberies, right? We've done a tremendous job in the suppression of street robberies since January first. I- in fact, Bushwick has only taken a total of twenty-eight robberies since January first. We're talking about a decrease of almost seventy percent from January first to current. So what does that mean? It, it gives us the ability to really see where we are still taking some clusters and where we could do, you know, some more work. And what do we see right now? We see a small cluster, four or five incidents on Linden Street, uh, between Irving and Saint Nicholas Avenue on the overnight hours. And, and what could we, we say to this? So obviously precinct-based, you know, deploy resources accordingly, engage our crime prevention officer, engage our auxiliaries for, you know, some additional omnipresence out along the Linden Street, Wykoff, Saint Nicholas area. But overnight hours, what do we see a lot of? We see maybe some people exiting, um, the subway station or making their way home from work, walking solo. And, and what do we see as we review video surveillance, right? Kinda head down, buried into the phone, not really too aware of their surroundings. Um, should you be able to work from point A to point B and do that? Uh, of course, that, that's not the message. But small behaviors, right, tucking that phone in your pocket as you make your way and you traverse your way home, you get through the door, you know, you're a little more aware as you're walking. That's what we act like, you know, just small, small kinda those changes in, in behavior as we make our way down the streets and, and we'll continue to maintain those decreases in street robberies. Now, uh, another crime prevention thing, another thing I, I've seen over the past month or so, not street-level crime, more along the lines of, um, you know, uh, the scam, right? Uh, grand law sneaks through scamming people. And what I say is, what I see is this, you know, I see a lot of like apartment rental scams, right? I may live at one nine five Linden Street, right? And I'm looking at to rent an apartment at four eighty Nikabaka Avenue. So I engage with that person purporting to be a real estate agent solely through online, right? Solely through the internet, like, I never actually go out and see if four eighty Nikabaka is available or I never meet that real estate agent and person and, and I just get into that digital world of conversation. And then that digital world of conversation leads to what? The person purporting to be the real estate agent says, yes, you know, this location, apartment one A is in very high demand. Do me a favor, sell me two thousand dollars for the first month's rent, sell me two thousand dollars for a security deposit. And, and you know, that on, they make that person feel who's about to be a victim, like, all right, I gotta get the money, this money right now cuz I really want this location and now I'm gonna lose it. They said, okay, no problem, yep. So they sell four grand, right? And then they said, all right, come meet me here in front of the location, Tuesday, four eighty Nikabaka, one A. They walk out there Tuesday thinking they're gonna meet a real estate agent. They're standing out there fifteen minutes or so, you know, curious of what's going on. Let me make my way into the building. They knock on one A and there's a family of four living there. You know, so this is what I say, like, you know, when, when we're ready to make that step and we're doing, you know, real estate, like, sometimes, you know, the digital world, right, Zoom, the Teams, all that has a purpose. But, you know, when it's getting to the point where we're exchanging currency in the thousands of dollars, that really is something you wanna vet out in person, right? You wanna know the person that you're paying your hard-on money to. You wanna see for yourself firsthand, beyond just pictures on the internet, that this location is available and what you're seeing on the internet is what you're seeing in person. And you should be acting with that type of security before you engage in some of these financial transactions. And I put that out there, right, because I can't go put two more offices on Linden and Wilson to suppress something like that. And, and sometimes it's against elderly people, right, like, that people take advantage of. So, you know, I speak of what I say, like, we have to take what we speak about in this room back into the community, back into the conversations we have our neighbors. And it's just another thing, like, if we hear over here, hey, this person's looking for apartment, like, let's pass along that message. Hey, you know what, I heard at the community board meeting that some people are getting scammed i- in this manner. And that one conversation may result in one less victim, one person losing like seven, several thousand dollars that they're not gonna be able to recoup at the end of the day. So let's all be good neighbors and work on that together. Thank you very much and I'll take any questions now.
Felix Savario, CB four, hello, Inspector.
Hello, sir.
Um, yes, I see, I see differing in our neighborhood, in our community. And thank you for the job you're doing. And, but I think we have to support each other like community, to work together like community. For example, in, in fire hydrant, I see now ticket in the car and that is good. But I remind you, they're still doing.
Yeah.
But thank you for the job you're doing. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Annette Spelling, uh, Inspector, do you have a flyer for the, um, uh, to build a block for, for Sector Adam?
Yeah, we, we, we could provide a hard copy of that flyer as well.
Because I can put it up to my.
Perfect, yeah, we have that. And actually, if you've seen some of our newer builder block flyers, right? I- instead of just putting like time, place and location, the, the newer flyers that we've built out now actually include the, the images of the two NCOs for that specific sector and then a precinct-based map with the sector itself highlighted for that. And so you know, like, oh, okay, twelve thirty-one Jefferson, I know, you know, that's my sector.
Cecilia Fabian, CB four, um, just wanna say too, I can see the difference in my neighborhood. I appreciate it very much. Uh, you guys been working on it for quite some time now, since you got onto precinct in eighty-three. Um, in regard of, uh, like, the pain and the places, uh, to pay for new apartments and that kinda stuff, I think it's definitely very important.
Yeah.
I was taken, my, my daughter paid for an apartment and I wasn't prepared to this part and they took us for about two, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And there was no apartment.
Yeah, yep.
So.
Back what I just, yeah. It's unfortunate and that's really why we have spread that message cuz, you know, like, a- as you read, right? We, we, we take incidents, they, they reported on a complaint report and then they were referred to our detective squad for investigation. And, and then as you read through the investigative work and you get into the interviews and, and just see it happen time and time again, you know, like, it, it's now my job to, to bring that message out because it, it really is, it, it's happening too often, it's too commonplace. Sometimes maybe we're too reliant on, oh, yeah, this must be a good person that I'm talking to via text message or, or on this website and, and things like that. And, you know, just imagine that feeling, you go knock on that apartment door, you're already out of pocket four grand. You think you're getting apartment keys and you, you find out the apartment is not even vacant.
Captain, I, I, I know that, uh, you, uh, yesterday gave, I mean, Inspector, I'm sorry. I gave one, you just reminded. I gave one, you gave one of your officers an award. Can you in detail, uh, tell us and make sure that people understand that when we give an area and you go to that area, you think that it's just something small, but after the fact, it's something more bigger going on than what you anticipated. Maybe you can, uh, uh, enlighten. Maybe you can, uh, enlighten us on why this young man and this officer received an award yesterday? Because it'll open all our eyes in what's going on in the community. That we may see that it may be something little, but maybe by saying something, it can be something much bigger and maybe nothing can happen. So he'll charm you in on what was going on.
So yeah, ju- just to forward on what Mr. Camacho is saying, so, right, right? We, we get complaints, we get issues that are brought to us that, you know, something can get an immediate response, right? There's a car parked on the hydrant on, you know, Bushwick and Furman. Yep, we could go down there, we could summons that vehicle, we could have a tow truck come and remove that vehicle. And that's immediate response and that condition is now rectified until the next car parks there. Some things, right? Some things that get brought to us entail a little more work beyond just the generic patrol response. And last night, we, we honored one of our officers assigned to our field intelligence unit that falls under the intelligence bureau. So for everybody understands, like, every precinct in the city of New York has personnel from the intelligence bureau that, that, you know, conducts short term type of investigations for, for street level conditions out in the community. So without going into like exact addresses, right? I'll give the intersection of Stanhope and Wilson. There was a condition that was brought to our attention for some type of street level narcotics sales. We passed that along to our field intelligence team, right? Because that's something that's time consuming, a little more labor intensive to look through. And they employed their efforts, they employed their resources that they have available to them and, and conducted, right? For a combination of investigation, surveillance and, and things, you know, and so forth. And what has it then resulted? You know, they were eventually able to obtain a, a residential search warrant for a location within the vicinity of that intersection. And now what do they recover from inside of that structure? They recover fifteen grams of meth, twenty-three grams of heroin, a hundred and three grams of cocaine, a loaded thirty-eight revolver and a loaded nine millimeter. So, right? And that's why we chose Officer Jacquez as top of the month. Because it, it really just is phenomenal work. Because it, it's obviously a, a significant amount of narcotics. It kind of just shows you exactly what was going on out of that structure within the vicinity of Stanhope and Wilson, right? And, and what do drugs lead to, right? Drugs lead to guns. So now that's two additional loaded firearms that will never see the streets of Bushwick again.
Thank you, Captain. Anyone has any, I mean, Inspector, I'm sorry. Any questions for the Inspector, I'm sorry, I'm like the cat, you gotta carry.
I'll make the guy feel better, it's all right.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone, any concern, anything?
Deputy Inspector, thank you so much for being.
Thank you for having me.
Leadership, um, I just want to pay homage to one of your off. They called, uh, I pass the church at Bushwick in Lafayette Hemrod. Um, and they said, we know that Easter Holy Week is coming up. Is there anything that you need? Seems like a simple thing, but for me, it was remarkably amazing to get that call and. It's of me offering complaints at times and suggestions of things to be better.
Yeah.
Also want to share, um, this.
That's very much appreciated. Thank you very much for that.
All right, Cat, Inspector, you're out of the hot seat, so you can.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
And number five, district manager reports, our famous Celeste Leom.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. So good evening, everyone, and happy belated Saint Patrick's and International Women's Day. This month is also Women's History Month and National Geriatrician Month. I hope you've been able to enjoy some of the related activities and events as well as the extra daylight. Below is an overview of the meetings and events I attended in the past month. I will summarize as Mr. Camacho and I do attend many of the same events and meetings. All right, I think this one's better. So folks can probably hear me on Zoom, but not everyone can hear me. So I will summarize as I usually do and I will start with Thursday, February twentieth. I had a check in and I will just say throughout each month, I am on a regular basis checking in with all committee chairpersons, different board members. This one in particular was a call with Verdi Jones. We talked about the youth and education committee, just to make sure everything is prepared prior to their meeting. And the same day I went into a meeting with my, that my fellow district managers in Brooklyn. It was with the team for our borough president, Antonio Reynoso. We were talking about charter reform. Mr. Camacho mentioned this earlier. We continued this conversation when we met with the borough president. He is looking to propose several recommendations in the city council's charter revision process. I highly encourage, we, we found out about, well, I found out about the Brooklyn hearing a day after the hearing. So I hope they do better with outreach in the future, uh, cause there was no way for us to provide notice, just given that it wasn't well advertised. There are hearings this entire month across the five boroughs. So if you missed the one in Brooklyn, I highly recommend you check out the others. Each charter revision commission, uh, just for context, the mayor has a process, the city council can have a process. They come up with different recommendations that may change how the charter is, is written for New York City. And an example of this is when they chose to recommend term limits for board members. And we know that that's a very sensitive subject. So just an example, get involved. Uh, and then let's see, the same day I had a meeting with our fellow, uh, who presented last month during the public hearing. The three one one project is ongoing and he will present the final, uh, presentation next month in April. And wow, that, that day was very busy. I have one more thing for February twentieth. City, New York City Transit, MTA, there was a borough based feedback session for their twenty-five to twenty-nine capital plan. Want to thank Ben for also participating in that session. We were able to provide feedback on the priorities for Bushwick, which are clear in the board's district needs statement and budget requests. That includes investing in an elevator or ADA accessibility at Decob Avenue. We were also able to highlight, uh, the community's repeated attempts to open the second entrances along the JZ line. And let's see, next I have on Thursday, February twenty-seven, Mr. Camacho referenced this, the district office committee. Just a point of information, in May, myself and the staff in the office will receive one final, uh, three, three percent increase. The staff, uh, being union are receiving, um, the, the raise based on the collective bargaining agreement from DC thirty-seven. Usually what happens for managers, myself being the manager, it's based on mayoral pay or personnel orders. And so all of that information will be discussed at the future meetings and Mr. Camacho will provide a report with additional information. And then on Tuesday, March fourth, I had a meeting with Kaya, uh, Kira Cuevas from city planning. This was in response to our last month's public hearing where the council land use presented on the city of Yass zoning for housing opportunity. As you'll recall, we only got halfway through that presentation. You'll hear more, they will be coming back, uh, next week to the housing and land use committee. They wanted to know how things went. I did pass along some of the initial feedback that we received that evening. And then we had a further discussion during the executive board meeting. On Wednesday, March fifth, I had a conversation with Joyce Freeling, the director of Cuny Crest at City College. She's someone I met at a recent panel event and she's looking to do, they have work right now with Manhattan community boards, but they're looking to, to both implement that work and then eventually expand the work. It involves community health, it involves the environment and bridging those two things together and empowering communities ultimately. And on Thursday, March sixth, there was a meeting, uh, the future of community boards, uh, several district managers from the different boroughs. I believe we had one, uh, per borough. The Center for Urban Pedagogy and the Civic Engagement Commission, uh, helped us coordinate a meeting with the borough presidents offices. This was a follow-up conversation about the community board term limit project. Some of you may recall, we started this last year. We are looking to continue, uh, into a different phase with potentially other deliverables, other tools to support community boards as they go through term limit transitions. And on March seventh, I had a meeting with Kayla Steen, who's a public member. This is, just as a general, um, I'm available if folks, whether you're a public member, a board member, a community member, if you have questions or concerns about things that are happening in the neighborhood. I generally set up a thirty minute to an hour meeting with folks and I walk, you know, walk folks through how the city works, what to do, how you can follow up on any, any concerns you may have and some of the resources that are available. And Tuesday, March eleventh, there was the Borough Service Cabinet Meeting. City Planning presented their district needs roadshow, which includes all of the, uh, feedback that the board submit each year through the district needs process, uh, as, as the executive board could attest. The responses from the agencies this year were particularly appalling. You have some agencies recommending we remove requests for, for items that the community still needs. And it turns out that city planning was attempting to make the process more effective and, and unfortunately did not work out the way that they intended. They did apologize, um, you know, we, we received a call later that day. There were a lot of district managers emphasizing that boards felt disrespected by agencies telling them to remove requests that have yet to be met. Um, and so just, just noting that they, they are definitely, um, trying to amend, amend that in the future and were sincere in, in their attempts. Uh, and then the same day I was a part of a webinar, preparing graduates for a changing workforce, insights and trends for higher education. And it was focused on how AI is coming to different employers or different jobs. And I, I, I was interested because we know government tends to lag far behind. And thinking about how we may see emerging technologies, uh, becoming more apparent in the community, it's important to also be prepared for that and have those conversations ahead of time and potentially welcome, um, you know, folks, graduates, you know, individuals that have this kind of expertise into these conversations so we can all learn a thing or two. And let's see. And to wrap up, we also had a conversation, the district manager working group met with city planning to go over the budget request reference guide. It includes all of the possible requests that you can make for budget items. We added, we, we amended, we've edited some items. We also clarified what's a service request versus what's a budget request. It was a very productive discussion and we certainly appreciate, uh, city planning being open to having that. And the same day, there was a, a budget testimony discussion. This Friday is the city council's governmental operations committee, uh, budget preliminary budget hearing. The community boards are not on the agenda. However, the community boards are still planning to show up and provide public comment about the needs that we have. And we will certainly include and capture the feedback that we've received in this forum and from the board at large. And that concludes my report, thank you. Yeah, if there's any questions, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian, going once, going twice. I don't see anything on Zoom, oh, go ahead. Wait, one moment for the mic, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, you wanna come up?
Hello, I'm Abu, I'm on CB three. And so with the Broadway station openings, if you could send us that information, um, since of course that impacts both sides of the line.
Absolutely. All right, seeing no one else, we will move on now to our committee reports.
My committee report, uh, district office as, talk aloud on it, I think it's working, yeah. As of, uh, we had, uh, at the beginning, agenda three, board member attendance review, district manager review, January twenty-fifth. Board member attendance review, uh, two members could be, uh, removed, uh, could be recommended for removal due to absence. They were flagged, uh, one of them resigned and one was to help the issues. I'm not getting into anyone's name, cause you know, I don't want to put nobody on notice, uh, on it, they know who they are. Members who, who previously, uh, received letters, uh, due to three or more absence. There were, uh, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, two, three of them improved. Uh, one, uh, one was absent, one absent, uh, noticed to office. On agenda item one, committee, a roll call, uh, four committee members with president, present, uh, constitutes a quorum. The meeting moves on, uh, Celeste wrote, H, uh, HVS program and staff update. Or, um, in regards to the air conditioner, uh, that we got, uh, also the collective bargaining agreement with DC thirty-seven. The mail what Celeste mentioned before, uh, in regards to the, the, uh, salaries, a new, uh, HR training platform, uh, so maybe Celeste can fill the sink. Cause Celeste, yes, Celeste, mostly all this Celeste put in.
Yeah, so this is all, yeah, this is all directly from the district office. So we were sharing, uh, each, each year, the staff are asked to take specific trainings for city employees, their human resources trainings. And they transitioned us to a different platform. However, they did not verify that we had access to the platform prior to transitioning. Um, and so we're still in the process, um, you know, borough, the borough president's office has indicated that our information was provided to the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. But this is for NY City Learn, which all city agencies will be using to take those trainings going forward. We flagged this for the borough president, uh, in our meeting as well. Just as an example of, of making sure that there's clear communication, we want to do our part. But if we're not set up for success, then, you know, we're gonna need that support or know how to better respond to those types of things.
Because, because some of these things are required in our RFP when we do our, our, our recertification and making sure that, uh, we are in compliance. So we want to make sure that if I have to take a, a, a course, uh, that I have it because that, uh, gives us in regards to our evaluation and what we have to do in order to be in compliance. So we do have to take courses, you have to take classes and you gotta go to training. So yes, uh, the chairs. And then we had New York NYC dining application, which is getting ready, everybody know as of now. And there was no recommendation, uh, none, uh, committee, and that was it.
Any questions, going once, going twice? I don't see anyone on Zoom, all right? Next, we'll move on to economic development and housing and land use.
Hi, everybody, Anne Guiney, Housing and Land Use Committee Chair. We met on the twenty-fifth, my co-chair, uh, Economic Development is Christine Maldon. She, because she's gonna be presenting permits and licensing with Isa Abni, I'll just present this, just so she doesn't have to, uh, too much. Basically, we met on February twenty-fifth. We had our second and sort of, uh, completed review of the responsible development policy. As many of you know, this is something we worked on for several years and passed as a group, as a board in two thousand twenty-one. And it's basically our statement of values. It is not enforceable, but this is telling anybody who wants to build in our district, this is what we believe, this is what we want. It's to save our time to save their time so that they know exactly, so we don't have to ask them the same questions and they don't have to, you know, figure stuff out. And it is really trying to make sure that we get higher quality development here and that we get the best return for public, you know, uh, public value. And, uh, if, if we are being asked to give something in the form of approval or recommendations for something like a ULP application, we want to make sure that the, the full voice of the community is being represented. So the, uh, it was a virtual meeting because, um, we had to, it was, there was no heat in the office, so we could not meet in person. So while we voted to make a presentation here today and support it and ask for your recommendation, I mean, ask for your support in passing it, uh, we couldn't do that because it was virtual. So what we have decided to do is have it be a public hearing meeting. The, the committee passed it, we had, you know, there's a lot of vigorous back and forth over several months. And we'd like to present it to the full board as a public hearing meeting, uh, item next month, so everybody knows what's up. It's, we, you will get it. There's a lot of good information in the Housing and Land Use Committee notes. And this is stuff about affordability, unit size, parking, uh, uh, hiring practices for developers, uh, avoiding a preference for ULP over a board of, uh, standards and appeals variance. Like, these are things I think we talk a lot about, so I think you're gonna be super familiar with them. But there's again, there's a good sort of shorthand in this month's notes, which everybody got in the email today from Kim. And then again, we'll be presenting it at the public hearing next month. So, uh, we hope you all are interested. And, you know, if you want to come to the Housing and Land Use Committee meeting next month, as ever, every single person here and others, welcome, please join us. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yep, we have a few questions.
Sure. Okay, no questions. Oh, he's up next, got it, you're on deck, all right. Any other questions? Any other questions? And also, uh, there's a lot of committee mail, which is honestly very interesting and it's, it's, I heartily recommend folks. And it's, it's, I heartily recommend folks read the committee mail. It's maybe that's nerd recommendation, but I think it's very useful and helpful. So, and that is also, you can find the link to that in the notes as well. So always recommend it. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne. James, take it away.
James Stewart, Chair, SB. There were three committee members present. There were three committee members. Form, and so it is imperative that committee members show up so that we can vote. There were two agenda items. One of them was from Councilmember Nurse, who presented the Progressive Caucus FY26 Budget Campaign. Campaign. And so it was prepared to bring a recommendation to the, but of course, due to a lack of quorum, we couldn't, that she would provide a one-page summary of her presentation to the committee here tonight. And so we're hoping that at next month's meeting that we could potentially move that to a vote. Julianne Roman from the American Cancer Society also came and gave a report on colorectal cancer awareness, the importance of colorectal cancer screening, and shared additional resources, which is available. Afterwards, we reviewed the committee mail, which there were a number of things, including the Brooklyn Veterans Appreciation Parade, which is coming up in the fall. And so we want to encourage you all to be a part of that. Of course, that will be as individuals and not as members of the board, unless you get approval from Celeste and Mr. Camacho. Health and Hygiene, New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene is proposing to amend Chapter 3 of Title 24. And so that is something that we need to keep on our radar. The hearing is on March 27, which is next week, Thursday, and that will be conducted by video conference. And so it is, again, once again, it is important that committee members, who are assigned to committee, to be there so that we, when we do meet, and we're not a committee that meets a lot. And so when we do meet, we do have things that we have to bring forth in terms of recommendation to the board. And so, please, let's, let's commit ourselves to do that. Thank you.
Yes, and I want to echo what, what our chair and committee said. Committee members, you gotta go to your committees because there are important things that we need to vote on. And if the community don't know, and you, someone gives a complaint, and then you say, well, we couldn't vote on it, we really need to have, have the committee. Everything is done in committee. None, nothing is done here. Everything here is done for us to vote, to get our agenda pushed over, and keep it moving. All that other stuff is done in committee, or the arguing, or the fighting, or the riffraffing is done in committee. But if no one's gonna come, and no one's there, and it's sad that our councilperson was there to do her presentation, and you had nobody in committee, that gives a black eye to myself too, as the chair. So we really need to, if you want to get on committee and you want to come, I know you're volunteer, and I know the Borough President's staff is here. Then you don't want to come, don't come. If you don't have time, don't do it. Don't join. Don't join. Because we count on you, and the community counts on you, and the Borough President counts on you that you're gonna come, and you made a commitment that you're gonna come, and you did an interview, and now they're really intense to make sure they got, then you gotta do what you gotta do. And committees gotta read their mail review. We're not gonna go reading stuff in here. You have to read it on your own, and if there's something important, bring it up, bring it up. But it's there. Before, we had stacks of paper over here for years. We had all the reports, everything. Now everything done, you can look at it at your own leisure, you can read it, and if there's a problem, call Celeste, read it, what does this mean? Okay, this is what it means. So it's, it's getting easier for you guys to do your job. I also condense some of these committees. So you don't have to come 500 meetings. One meeting on committee, one meeting to the full board. That's it, two meetings. Thank you. Sorry, Fran.
Hi, everyone. Fran from Councilmember Nurse's office. I put a one-pager of the presentation that the council member made to the committee on each table, in case you want to browse through it. But the council member wants to know if that is something that can be put on the new business for tonight because we do need a recommendation from the board as soon as possible. So I know that there wasn't quorum at the committee meeting, so I just want to ask what the procedure would be for that tonight.
If anybody wants to make a recommendation on the floor, and then someone seconded it, then if they do that, then we can vote on it.
And for the folks on Zoom, the presentation is in the chat as well.
Imagine. Under, under recommendations.
Yeah, James Stewart, Committee Chair. This is something we were trying to figure out how we could bring it to the board because council member did mention this. And so as Chair, I make a recommend, I make a motion that we approve the Crisis to Care Campaign.
All in favor? Any abstain? Motion carried. But, but this is just for us to do in our, yes. This is for us to make a recommendation, our recommendation, okay? When recommendation comes up. Okay, everybody understands that, right? Okay. Now we're moving on. Permits and licenses, guess who it is? Take a guess. First one's not right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pray. All right, Christine.
All right, where's the address?
Whoa.
Hi, everyone. Can you guys hear me? Should I just hold it like this? So we, my committee, our committee, because Christine and I aren't even co-chairs, we're just members. We approve or recommend the new beer, alcohol, wine, cider, and cannabis permits. Sorry, Stephanie. We, we, we either approve or disapprove the new beer, wine, alcohol, cannabis permits for establishments in the area. Correct? We're all aligned there? Okay, good. So we had a pretty straightforward meeting. We had four businesses. Three were non-controversial, so we're gonna start with those. We had El Hardin at 266 Soudam, Soudam Street. They were a, just looking for a new beer and cider license. All their hours fell between our stipulations. Just to be clear, our stipulations are that we don't permit, well, we only allow selling alcohol until 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and then up until 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. That's what this whole group agreed to last September. We can go back to that discussion if you guys like. The next one is Chalongo Takaria, based at 295 Wyckoff. What are their hours? Actually, let me give you hours for the first one too, sorry. First one, they want to sell alcohol between 11:00 to 12:00 AM. That is for El Hardin. For Chalongo, we are looking at Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 to 12:00 AM, and Friday, Saturday until 11:00 to 2:00 AM, all of which falls within our stipulations. Next one, J&amp;D Restaurant, which actually used to be called Lee's Restaurant, but the dad passed away, passed it to the son, so they came in asking for, was it a renewal? Yeah, a new liquor, wine, beer, and cider license. Their hours, oh, they're at 1546 Myrtle Avenue. Their hours are Sunday through Thursday, 11:30 to 9:30, and then Fridays and Saturdays, 11:30 to 11:00 PM. Also within our stipulations. Okay. So just a reminder, we passed these stipulations last fall due to all the complaints we got from the Wyckoff-Jefferson area. So all the quality of life issues, the urination, the smoking, the drunken street fights. So at the request of Assemblywoman, at the request of many residents, many residents here, at the request of many on the board, we passed these stipulations to curtail the sale of alcohol past a certain hour. Four.
So the first three, the, the board recommended approving all three of the first, the first three restaurants that were mentioned. And then for our fourth applicant, who was Zenidu, we actually voted in opposition. I think that they have hours that are currently in line with our stipulations, but they were asking for an extension to those till 4:00 AM every night of the week.
And then we changed, they, they changed it, so let's be fair. So they wanted to extend until 1:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and then until 3:00 AM, Friday and Saturday, which falls out of our stipulations. So we bought it, Stephanie's giving me a look, but. So we voted to not support those extension of hours. I think that pretty much sums it up. So those are the recommendations you're gonna hear in a couple of minutes. Any questions there before we continue? Alasayo? And you drove me home after that meeting, so be nice.
Okay, can you check Agenda Item Number 4? Number 3, motion?
Or motion 3?
You, Isa, and Alex Moreno, you voted not to extend the hours to 1 o'clock and 3 o'clock.
Correct. Well. We put the motion forward, and the committee supported it.
Right, well, on, on, on motion 3, that was when it took vote. So you, according to the sheets here, you and Alex voted not to extend their hours for one hour each day, and I understand why. There was two people, and one of them was me, that abstained.
Abstained.
Abstained. So that does not mean yes or no. That means that in a committee of four, you had two people that voted. They voted yes.
One second, but comparative information, what does an abstained vote mean?
Who says that?
Robert's rules.
I have the, the meaning of abstain. He says abstain is to decline, to vote either yes or no. Maybe you guys are right. I'm just double-checking to be on the fair side. No, no, I don't need the book, Camacho, and I don't even need you to be part of this talking right now because you're out of this for now. Please, give me the floor. Okay, so me and Ms. Jackson abstain. So we have four people to say no and to abstain. So how can the vote carry? And if it does carry, God bless you, let's go moving forward, and let's go to next one.
Yeah, the, the only time a vote is not counted is when someone recuses. So, but otherwise, if it's an abstention, it automatically, as per Robert's Rules of Order, is a no.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
And we have our next committee report, Ms. Jones.
Reggie Jones, Chairperson for the Youth and Education. Thank you. So we had a virtual meeting on February 24th, as Mr. Camacho and others have said, and that was due to the heat in the building. Ms. Rodriguez from CEC was supposed to attend, but she didn't. And she was gonna provide some updates on the district concerns and priorities, but she did not attend. So we had two volunteer coordinators, Natalie Sensilio and Jake Levine. And they were from the Reading Partners NYC. They provided information to bring the awareness to their work and looking for new ways to engage the community. Reading Partners is a literary nonprofit that provides one-to-one tutoring to elementary school students. And then she went on to tell us that they provide, they, they target students in kindergarten through 4th grade, and they also said they'd have tutors age 14 and up. To highlight, they talked about some of their success that they've had with the program. And also, she said that the program started in California. I did have it underlined. Where is it at? Anyway, I'm sorry. So, and they are 501(c)(3), and they have approximately 100, 1,300 students and 1,430 tutors. Okay, I said that already, right?
Yep.
All righty. And like I said, they started back in California, but they don't have any stu, any, they do not have any students here in Brooklyn, which is what she was saying. And that's what they're trying to do. And she said that they work Monday through Thursdays. There were some questions and answers with regards to their programs that they had. And some of also, the structure is I-do, we-do, you-do, less than model, which most of us are familiar with in the education field. And the program did begin in 1999 in Menlo, California. And in 2010, their first American Corps grant and expanded outside of California. And like I said, remind, as a reminder, they're just volunteers. So they said that if we needed more information, we could get in contact with them, and they would be able to give us more specifics with regards to the program. We asked about how does the program come to the potential of setting up the program in Brooklyn? And they said that the principal decides what grades they want to work with, and they have one to two program coordinators to work with each school. Then we went through our committee review, mail review, and it talked about the CEC elections, which we should hear something soon as to who is taking that seat for the superintendent. Of course, abusing New York City school yards as a playground, NYC Development Specialist, and a notice from the, from the Coalition for Hispanic Family Services. That's pretty much it. Then we went on to announcements, and Ms. Forster, who we're, most of us have seen in our meetings, she said that there had been a decline in the students at Bushford High School for the Adult Literacy Program because of the ice skiers that were going around, you know, in the neighborhood. And she talked, some of the other sites, 106, 145, 162, they're open on Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:00. We asked about what's the chance of getting a Spanish-language program for non-Spanish-speaking adults? And she said that first we had to get at least 25 names and phone numbers for enrollment. And then we would talk to the, they would have to get a licensed DO teacher, set the dates, times, and location. So that's something we may look, they may look to in the future. And we are encouraging our youngsters, those that are 14 and over, to get their working papers. Mr. Graham talked about Growing Forward HBCU College Tour, which we'll probably announce more about that when he comes up. And they've been doing that for a while. He provided his phone number. The website is growing, the number four, ward, W A R D dot O R G. We also talked about the Association for Black Educators of New York, the scholarship for graduating seniors in public schools. And if you want information, Sheila Bobo, B O B O, at gmail dot com. And it also should be in the newsletter next month. And also, not only for the seniors that are graduating, but they started a couple of years ago, the Human Service Awards for all of our students. The deadline for the application for the scholarships is April 30th for the scout, for the Human Service Scholarship Awards. for the scout, for the Human Service Scholarship Awards. It should be, submit it no later than May 31st. And that's our, our meeting. Thank you.
All right, any questions, Youth and Education? Going once, going twice? I don't see anyone on Zoom. All right, thank you, Virgie. And next, we will keep it moving on to recommendations. And there was one, one item that did not come up under permits and licenses, but I know it was discussed at the meeting. The executive board had voted on a letter, just given the fact that there is not currently a committee chair, and they did not have a meeting in February. The executive board discussed a letter to send to the state liquor authority in reference to the unregulated proliferation of large nightlife venues with 200-plus capacity in Bushwick. This is specifically speaking to the, the venues and businesses that are outside the Jefferson Street L subway stop. I won't read the entire letter, but I will focus on the last part, which is, "We respectfully request an opportunity to discuss this further in partnership with our state representatives. Our goal is to adapt existing regulatory tools and stipulations to improve the economic and residential ecosystem in this part of the district." So it's, the letter's fairly straightforward. It includes all of the complaints that we've received summarized and really sets the stage for us to have, hopefully, a productive conversation with the state liquor authority. Is, and there was a recommendation in support from the executive board. Is there a motion from the full board this evening? Joanna Bennett makes a motion support. Okay, Joanna Bennett makes a motion support, seconded by Mr. Ceballos. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? So moved, and the assemblywoman already requested a copy tomorrow. So we checked in recently. All right, and let's see, next we have any other committees prior to permits and licenses? It's the, do we want to do the health human service with the crisis to care? First, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, James, or?
Yeah, James Stewart, HH. Talk a little bit about crisis to care. Plan aims to invest $61 million in mental health and public safety issues. The funds will support mental health support networks, crisis response workforce, and infrastructure for long-term care. The plan includes $22 million for intensive mobile treatment teams, forensic assertive community treatment teams, micro grants for domestic violence survivors. Plan also includes centers, supportive housing programs, and syringe service programs. And so just wanted to bring that bit of information as we vote on.
And I just have one, one note from the district office perspective. A lot of times, there are very good intentions with investing this kind of funding. However, not all programs are created equal, and there can be inconsistent implementation and engagement. So I encourage the board to take that into consideration. Having services for mental health means that there may be organizations that are seeking to provide these services in an establishment. You know, we don't want to give into stigma, but we do want to make sure that we're a part of the conversation, and we don't just have services popping up that we're not aware of that we can work in collaboration. So is there, is there someone that would like to make a motion or a recommendation based on this discussion?
Just, just for point of information, I know that Luisa and myself went to Woodhull Hospital. They're opening a mental institution there, a facility for mental health there. They put a lot of money in there, it's really nice. But the other location on the other side, they did, one side don't look good at all. So the person that's been there for 18 months, the doctor that's been there, she's doing a phenomenal job. Her employees over there, we went in there, we seen some of the people. I know herself can contest that she was having, our, our chair was having some issues in her personal life with her daughter and seeking help. And she paid in that she needed to have a family room in that location besides having them in a square box with all those people there. So I, I commended her because I myself had my grandson. When he, he went to college, before he went to college, he had some problems. And we took him to Kings County Hospital in Manhattan. And, you know, it, it is a tragedy, but if they, we have it here, and they treat our kids well, and we have a place where our family can go visit them and, and make sure that they're all right. It's, you know, I know, I know, when you talk about this, it's really impacted, but maybe a facility like Woodhull, where they can go and assist, and of legal places where they can go because just like Celeste says, anybody can pop up and put these grants, and we don't know if it's going to be for us or have a different agenda. And we may not know, you know, what's going on. So we really have to cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure that these money and the people that are putting in for this understands the need and understands the family and the people that are getting it. So we want to make sure that Woodhull can also participate in that, if there is, because they need that place on the other side. Because I went there, we went there, it was, it was beautiful, you know? But the other side had these rooms that looked like it's antique. We really need to, they need to fix that place on the other side. One side looks good, one side don't. They pumped a lot of money on that side. I know the, the doctor that was there before, he's no longer there, the CEO. So there's someone else coming in. So I know on, on the cab, I'm going to be speaking out and speak to all these elected officials to let's fix that side. Let's see what is it that they can get to grab that money to and participate in that and make sure that we all in the same pace. Because any one of us can have a problem one day or another. And we want to go, why can't Camacho go to a place like that that is there? So we all got to be together, so.
Joanna Bennett question. So if I'm interpreting this right, you're asking that the board approve this recommendation with stipulations that the money, that the current stakeholders, such as a Woodhull Hospital, is part of that money? Is that what we're, you're asking? I'm trying to see if I'm hearing this, understanding this correctly. For a recommendation, recommendation that we see that the money be approved, but with stipulations, is that it?
That's, that's what Mr. Camacho said. My only amendment to that would be to ensure that there's community engagement and that there's a two-way relationship when these services are coming. So the council member can advocate and say yes to, to these services that we need, but we want to make sure that we're a part of that conversation, not just now, but, but throughout the process.
Yes, yes, to make sure that they cross the Ts and dot the Is, yes.
Okay, I'm in agreement with it, but it also, it needs to be through the community, not just in the hospital. Needs to be in the schools and the senior facilities also. Because sometimes seniors need to talk to somebody. So it needs to be where we can get it in Bushwick.
Yes, my understanding is that these are broad funds. They aren't tied to a specific institution. Mr. Camacho is just emphasizing Woodhull is an example of an institution that would benefit from the funds. But as you mentioned, Ms. Jackson, so would others, like senior centers, our schools and other locations. Is there any other question, comment? If not, is there a recommendation? Wait for the mic, please.
Annette Spellen recommends that we approve with stipulations that the community board and the community be involved in the procedure as it goes forward.
Virgie Jones, second, what was that? Oh.
Annette Spellen recommends that we approve with the stipulation that the community board and Bushwick community be involved in the process.
And Ms. Jones seconded, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, seeing none on Zoom, so moved. And next, I believe, is permits and licenses. A suggestion, would folks like to blanket vote for the three non-controversial applications first? Oh, okay, James, James is already out there. Okay, James, but the, is there, Raul Rubio seconds? All right, we're ready. Everyone's awake, all right. All in favor for the blanket vote?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So moved. And now for the recommendation, the committee recommended approval for those three non-controversial applications. Is there a motion from the board? Joanna Bennett makes a motion, seconded by Ben Tucker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one abstention. Anyone else abstained? Okay, two, two abstentions, okay. Motion still carries. All right. And then the last item, this is for Zanadu. The committee recommendation was to not approve their request to extend their hours to serve alcohol by one extra hour beyond the standard stipulations that the board provides to all liquor license applications at the current time. Is there, is there a motion from the board? You, so it's basically the committee recommendation. The full board has to demonstrate that they're either in favor or not in favor of that recommendation. Because that's, that's what's being recommended of the board, asked, requested from the board. Joanna Bennett supports the committee's recommendation to not approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Stephanie Anderson, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, so let me finish with the, anyone else opposed? Okay, and then Raul, I got you for abstaining. Any, any other abstentions? Okay. Mr. Ceballos also abstained? Okay. Zachary Hendrickson? Anyone else? So I have Raul Rubio, Elise Ruiz, Felix Ceballos, and Zachary Hendrickson abstained. I don't see any hands on Zoom. All right, and let me just, no. The, it was at the committee meeting where you were able to speak. So this is the board session. That was the time in which you were afforded to speak. Yeah, you, my understanding is you had over an hour to speak at the committee meeting. So, but this is now the board session, and we're in the middle of a, of a vote, which is about to conclude. I just need to double-check quorum to make sure that we can decide which way this is going. What was the? If more people came in, then that means that this motion carries. If more people did not come in, then we're going to have to do this all over again. So do, are we going to, you going to roll call vote it? Roll call, just a roll call vote?
Go ahead, I took that, yeah.
Okay, so because this is very close, and we want to make sure there's transparency, and to be fair, we're going to do a roll call vote. When, when I call your name, all I need to know is if you're opposed, if you're in favor, or if you abstain. So, and, and again, this is for the committee's recommendation to not approve the extension of the hours. Isa Abni. Okay, so you're, okay, so, okay. Stephanie Anderson. Yes, okay. Joanna Bennett. Okay, and you want to, are you keeping a tally? Okay, please keep a tally. Okay. Maqiba Brown Elaine. Okay. Robert Camacho. Felix Ceballos. Okay. Andrew Choi. I don't hear anything. Elvina Davis. Oh, can we still, can we hear folks on Zoom again? Elvina, you're muted. I don't know if that makes a difference. All right, some folks aren't responding from Zoom. And then we have, let's see, Cecilia Fabian abstain. Okay. Freddie Fowler. Okay. Jason Gares is excused, so it doesn't, doesn't count this eve- Thank you, doesn't count this evening because you're excused. It doesn't count, doesn't, he's excused, yeah. Christopher Graham. Okay. Okay, Anne Guiney. Okay, approved, okay. Zachary Hendrickson? Okay. Deborah Hicks? You're muted?
I do not approve, I do not approve, nay. They said a yay, nay.
So you, you do not approve as in?
I don't approve the extra hours.
So you, so you support the extension of the hours, is what you're saying?
No, 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 I do not.
Okay, 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 so you don't, okay, so that means you, okay, you approve. Okay, got it, I just want, I just want to make sure. Tanisha Honeyegan.
I abstain.
Okay. Barbara Jackson. Okay. Kaysha Johnson. Virgie Jones. Okay. Tara Jones Thomas. Luisa Jose. Christine Malden. Okay, thank you. Freddie Madison. Zuma Novoa. Raul Rubio. Elise Ruiz. Milagro Sandoval. Annette Spellen. James Stewart. Christian Tate. Ben Tucker. Okay. Jerry Valentine.
I abstain.
Thank you, Jerry. And just to make sure, Andrew, are you there? And Elvina, are you there? If we don't hear anything, then you're not there. All right. So let's do the tally. All right, did you approve, abstain, or opposed for the committee's recommendation?
Uh, abstain.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, she abstained. Sixteen were in favor of the committee's recommendation, nine abstained. The motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other recommendations, going once, going twice? Oh, what recommendation?
Okay, oh, you're right.
Okay, if there are no other recommendations, going once, going twice, we're now on to old business. Yeah. Which, oh, did we not, that was the first thing, the letter? Did I, no, that could be me, you could be right. Let me just make sure. Yeah, I think it was like the first, yeah.
Yeah, that was the first thing, that was the first thing.
Thank you, though, Isa. All right. So any old business, going once, going twice? None, any new business? Wait for the mic or comes to the mic? Yes, come up, yep.
Annette Spellen, I want to let you know we had two fires within Bushwick. One at the church on Holsey Street near Central Avenue, totally destroyed that facility. And the other, just this weekend, at Lafayette and Bushwick Avenue, where a firefighter has been injured and he's in cr- critical condition. The other thing is that the toilet in Irving Square Park is open and running at this moment. And the other thing is sanitation has put out the word that for homeowners, you have to use your compost cans. If you don't do it by April 1st, they will issue summonses. Homeowners should have their compost cans- Homeowners should have their compost cans in use. If they're not in use by, uh, April 1st, they're gonna issue summonses. And they notice that people haven't been putting that brown can out, so. And the other thing is, please, cars parked on fire hydrants, call 311 right away because they will inform the police department.
Hi, everybody, also some new business. Um, there is, the city does a liens auction every year. Uh, I know that Councilmember Nurses' Office Fran, uh, may have some additional information on this, but they're gonna do an auction. I checked and I mapped it, there are eight hundred in Bushwick. Bushwick has about, give or take, three hundred blocks. That is more than two liens per block in our neighborhood. Some of it's water bills, and that's relatively easier to solve. A lot of it is not water bills, and that could potentially be, make each of those properties very likely to get the lien sold, which makes it, you know, i- it can lead to, open them up to a lot of predatory situations. There are churches, there, I, I mean, there is not a single block in Bushwick that doesn't have one, basically. Uh, it is May 20th, the auction. There are several workshops through the various councilpeople, Gutierrez and Nurse. Uh, people are trying to help, if you have it, if you get a notice, open it. If you get a notice, answer it, read it. There is, there are tools to help people who need support in this. It's a hu, I think it's terrible that the city does it, and this is actually something, this is on Housing and Land Use Committee, uh, to-do list of, to actually be better about helping people remedy this kind of thing, because this is, we need to keep people in their houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Any, yep.
Just to veggie back on what Anne just said, the, the lien sale is the 20th. However, you have to enter into a payment agreement by the 19th, right? So by the 19th of the month, you have to enter into a payment agreement. And so, if it's your first time, you can enter into payment agreement, sometimes with no money down, and you can, um, they give you the terms, it can be, you know, a year, two years, 10 years, whatever it is. But you have to enter into that agreement so that the sale, because once it's in the sale, like Anne said, it's a lot of predatory, predatory things going on, and to my understanding, there are only like three companies that are allowed to purchase those liens, and I don't have to tell you what that is, because they want Bushwick, and they want Bushwick back, and they want it quick, so it could be, it can be for water, it can also be for your taxes. Um, if you look, the, it came out of the newspaper, but all you gotta do is just go look and see. Tell your neighbors, just make sure that they check and see if there's on it, you know, because I went and I saw the list, and I saw some of my neighbors on her side, I told them as well. So, just make sure you do that. Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, it's, it's DEP, I, I have it, I'll give it to you.
We'll, we'll make sure the information is circulated, and we'll include it in the upcoming newsletters. Any other new business, this is new, new business, this is not announcements. This is new business.
Any new business, going once?
Yep, if there's questions, yep.
I definitely gonna need more information about the water thing, because I do. But my question was, uh, in regard to the compost. Uh, I know that you mentioned April 1st, I believe, right? Um, I have a compost, uh, machine, I guess, literally in front of my house. That's what I use, so do I still have to put my own when I have the compost, uh, bin in front of my house, because that's the one I use?
We can, we can clarify with the Department of Sanitation, but my understanding is they don't want you to put any food in the garbage, so as long as you're not putting food in the garbage, you should be okay, but don't take my word for it. Let's verify with the Department of Sanitation, and I'll make sure this information gets back to the board. We can circulate it with the community.
Just a little bit of this. I have two big buildings coming up in front of my house, and another building behind me, um, is driving me completely bananas. But the other day, I recorded, they were working at 5:30 in the morning. What's the timeframe on buildings?
That's outside of hours, you have to call 311, report it, and then you can follow up with us, and we'll make sure DOB is out there. All right, we're moving on, no more new business. Announcements, a minute and a half. You are being timed.
Announcement. A minute and a half, she got the clock rolling. And there's a big monkey coming out and pull your guys out of there, and I'm gonna get it.
All right, uh, hi, I'm Kevin from Troubman Open Streets. I'm just here to announce that, uh, we're also having Troubman Open Streets again this year from April 26th, Saturday, to October 26th, Sunday, sorry? Oh, uh, Pat had a business meeting.
He said, you tell him you gotta come here, we need to see him.
All right, um, but yeah, we'll be doing it from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Uh, we have a website, TroubmanOpenStreets.org, and Instagram, and a Gmail at the same Troubman Open Streets. Uh, if anyone wants to do an event on the street, it's like totally free, just email and let us know, and we can coordinate, uh, you can, yeah, whatever you want, it's free. Uh, any nonprofits, community board, anyone wants to come and like do stuff?
Thank you for being here.
Uh, right, it's, it's TroubmanOpenStreets.org is the website, and there's a contact form, and then also TroubmanOpenStreets@gmail, and then Troubman Open Streets on Instagram.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, I'm Fran, Councilmember Sandy Nurse. I have three important announcements. Uh, first, participatory budget starts on March 29th and runs through April 6th. We have 10 projects on the ballot, eight of them are school projects, one of them is treaty guards, and the other one is the NYPD cameras that have been requested in different community boards. So if you want a say in where they go, please cast your vote during vote week. Um, we also are hoping to achieve over 10,000 votes this year, so I really need everyone to vote. You'll see me around. Um, next, the tax lien has been a hot topic. We are hosting two events. One at Arlington Library and one at Washington Irving Library. I brought a flyer, it's in the front, but for those of you who can't grab a flyer, the one at Washington Irving will be on May 6th from 5 to 8 p.m. in person. The Department of Finance will be there to talk about how to avoid the lien. Um, the lien sale, like what you owe, payment plans, tax exemption, et cetera. And we'll have some folks there as well who provide additional services, so it's a good thing to come to. If you can't come to the one in Bushwick, go to the one in East New York. And last but not least, uh, we are finally bringing the job fair to Bushwick's side of the district. It will be on May 17th. It will be targeted towards youth, but everyone is welcome. We are currently looking for organizations that want to come table and provide internship or job opportunities for youth across the district. Um, it will be at the Riseborough Youth Center, flyer to come, but save the date, May 17th.
Hi, everybody, I know it's so late. Um, so I'm Amy Calado, I'm with the Bushwick Housing Independence Project. Um, we're here to announce our monthly community meeting. We have them every last Wednesday at El Puente, at 311 Central Ave from 6:30 to 8 p.m. Last week, last month, we actually did a workshop where we had tenants apply for rent reductions. A lot of times, we only learn about our rights, we don't get an opportunity to practice together, and it was really good. That was people's first time seeing an actual form. This month, we're doing part two, but we're actually gonna teach tenants how to report landlord harassment through, um, not providing copies of leases. And so, um, March 26th through, uh, 6:30 to 8 p.m., 311 Central Ave. Our contact is bhip, B-H-I-P, organize at gmail dot com, and our phone number is 929-324-7358. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chanelle, I'm from IAM Federal Credit Union, formerly 1199 SEIU Federal Credit Union. I just want to inform everyone that the credit union is available for members in underserved areas, and you can take a look at our flyer up front. Our website is IAMFEDCU.org, 212-957-105. And we service, uh, members with savings, checking, loans for the underserved, and help them with any financial needs. Thank you for your time and space.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan from Congresswoman Velazquez's office. Um, I'm gonna try to be quick, we have a lot of updates, as you know, a lot going on in DC. Uh, but I want to start off by mentioning that the Congresswoman and other members of the New York City delegation sent a letter to the state to, calling for them to reject Con Edison's proposed, uh, um, rate hikes, thank you. Rate hikes, the proposed double-digit rate hikes of 11.4% for electricity and 13.3% for natural gas in a time when, you know, $948 million is owed by over 460,000 households, is just not correct. And the Congresswoman and her colleagues are calling for Con Edison to return to the drawing board to identify a better proposal. Um, yes, earlier this month, the Congresswoman voted no on the budget resolution, because under this plan, in our district, thank you, in, in our district, 12,000 people who receive, uh, coverage under the ACA, uh, will see their premiums go up by 50%. Over 286,000 people, over 46% of our district has Medicaid, and they're proposing $880 billion in cuts to Medicaid, as well as cuts to SNAP, which over 147,000 people in our district rely on SNAP to put food on the table. The Congresswoman has voted no on this budget resolution, she'll vote no again in September, and she had a press conference yesterday in front of Brooklyn Hospital in Fort Greene, calling, uh, calling out the majority party for, uh, proposing these cuts that will devastate our community. Um, yes, to end on a, on a, I'm sorry, just one more thing, to end on a brighter note, we want to, uh, you know, we, we honored Ms. Davis, I wish she was here, but we honored Ms. Davis last month at a Black History Month event. Uh, so thank you for all you do, Ms. Davis. And again, if you need, uh, help with a federal agency, please call our office at 718-599-3658, and I left flyers in the table over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Abu again. Like I said, I'm on CB3, uh, but I'm speaking for, uh, myself, uh, tonight. I want to speak about collaborative, uh, home buying. We know that, and we know that the homes are really expensive. Mr. Camacho mentioned in terms of wanting to keep us in our neighborhoods. Um, and also, also it's a lot of work, you know, we heard about that with the sewer thing. And a lot, and there's also a knowledge gap. A lot of people are on that liens list just because they didn't realize when they're, when they paid off their mortgage, their responsibilities, um, changed. So considering those three factors and, and several others, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is gather groups of people that are interested in, uh, buying a home, uh, together, uh, for my, for myself and for, um, other, uh, people. Uh, so, so I have some, some flyers, and I have, um, on my website as well, uh, my, uh, the e, my email is abubuild, um, slash how? That, my email is abu@abubuild.com, uh, phone number 929-483-3095. And the website is abubuild.com slash househack2025. Like I said, uh, group, several different groups, uh, but my particular interest is houses that need rehabilitation, and then the owners would live in part of it and rent out the, um, other parts of it.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Kim Vega from Councilmember Gutierrez's office. So I just want to share that the council member is officially back from a turtleneck, and she's ready to be active in the community. All right, and a couple of announcements, we have the PB projects ready, we're just waiting for the ballots, and we'll be sharing that shortly, so just be ready for that. Um, we're hosting mobile office hours at Decal Library on March 28th from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. Uh, we're having a town hall on Monday at 3 p.m. It's virtual, and it's in partnership with Q&amp;E Citizenship Now and Bushwick Community Partnership. I did bring some flyers, they're over there, so if you know anyone that wants to be more informed on their rights, this is for that. Um, we know that the building's tax lien list is out, and we are working to host two events in April, one in the beginning and one at the end. Um, they're not finalized yet, but one will be at our office, and the other will be at Riseborough 85 Melrose location. So once I get the final dates and times, I will share those. Um, and we are still doing our Affordable Housing Workshops on Thursdays with COF. Um, Q&amp;E Citizenship Now is at our office every Monday to assist with immigration matters, and every third Wednesday of the month, we have a housing attorney from Core, and for any of these services, you guys can give us a call at 718-963-3141 to make an appointment or get more details. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Maria Valdez from the Office of Senator Julia Salazar. Uh, she wanted me to highlight, um, the bill that she is, um, uh, working on, um, this, um, legislation, the End Toxic Home Flipping Act, S574. Um, this bill, um, will basically, um, tax investors that flip homes within two years of purchase up to 60%, um, and this will benefit homeowners and tenants at risk of displacement. Um, so basically, this will ensure the protection of affordable houses and dignity for low-income New Yorkers.
Hello, 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 guys, you gotta keep quiet back there, thank you.
Uh, for announcements, uh, we have, um, the tax prep in our office, um, this Sunday, which will be March 30th and April 14th, uh, from noon to 6 p.m. You need to make an appointment, um, at 347-682-5606. And we also have a tax clinic coming up on March 31st. Um, it will be at Decal Library at 4 p.m. I have the flyers back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Juanita James. I'm the branch manager of Washington Irving Brooklyn Public Library. So we just want to briefly, um, give out some highlights that we're doing. We have on Thursdays, our online registration hub to help people with NITRA or any other government websites, we can help you out with that. We also, starting April 7th, we're having our free beginners drop-in English classes. So if anybody's looking for English classes, we have it. We also have diabetes self, um, management course starting on April 3rd, on Thursdays, and they're gonna be running until May. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, Lacey Tauber, Office of Borough President, Antonio Reynoso. Uh, we have a bunch of stuff coming up. Uh, the first thing is our State of the Borough. It's on April 10th. Boys and Girls High School in Bed-Stuy at 7 o'clock. Please come out, it's gonna be really fun. You can find out a lot of stuff about what we've been up to. Take a flyer, it looks like this. It's got BP's little face on it from when he was a kid, very cute. Okay. Uh, the next thing is free tax prep, you heard about it before, we're doing it at Borough Hall. If you want to make an appointment, uh, check out one of these flyers. Um, along with basically all the other electeds here, we're co-sponsoring a Nox alone training that is, uh, tomorrow night at the Diana H. Jones Senior Center, uh, at 9 Knoll Street. So if you want to learn how to use Nox alone and, uh, save a life, you can do that. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about is this deed theft prevention workshop that we're doing on, um, on the 25th. Um, that's gonna be at Bed-Stuy Restoration, and a bunch of like legal services orgs. Um, if your property's on the lien sale list, that starts to open the door for scammers, so um, I'm sure you can get help with that as well here. Um, and I also just wanted to say on a personal note, thank you to everybody who applied for the community board. I had so much fun talking to everyone. Um, we're gonna get you all some really good members very soon, so stay tuned for that.
Hello again, Cirilo Nunez here. I'm here on behalf of Bushwick Sports and Recreation, uh, a local, uh, not-for-profit, and we're basically taking, uh, applications, uh, for in-house baseball, travel baseball, girls softball, men's softball, and soccer. I have some flyers back there. You have our contact info here, feel free to reach out. I'm also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, Christian Celeste Tate. I just wanted to follow up on Fran's announcement about participatory budgeting, because the NYPD cameras that are on participatory budgeting were submitted directly off the CB4 District Needs Statement. So whether you want to vote for it or not, I just want to give a shout out to this board for taking the district needs seriously, and also give a shout out to Councilmember Nurses' Office for providing us options to actually get these things funded.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanna Bennett. I'm not here talking on behalf of Community Board Four, but I just want to raise a little bit of awareness of what's going on out here in the world that I don't think many, I'm not hearing anybody talk about. Um, in the news, we're talking about DEI, and everybody in this room should know what DEI stands for. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. It is a policy that is being repealed by the federal government. It is a policy that is being repealed by the federal government. Our local, some of our local elected officials are opposed to this policy. I don't know why the representatives haven't spoken about it this evening, but it is something that affects everybody in this room. I'm talking about even Mr. Graham here. They're talking about taking money out of HBCU's, the future of our children's education. We're talking about people who work for the government being eliminated simply based on the color of their skin, not on their job performances. So we need to really think about, on, on February 27th, there was a boycott of some of the major stores that have gone along with this policy of eliminating DEI. So think about where you spend your money to show your economic strength. This is not the only day that it's going to happen. Pay attention to social media, look at the news, you will find out those dates and what organizations are supporting the repeal of DEI. And it's about our neighborhood, how much money is going to be pulled from jobs that affect us. Our, there's so much going on, so I just wanted to, you know, make sure that, to pull it out there and put it on the speaker, please pay attention.
Thank you. And on, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Christopher Graham, CB4 again. Before I begin my last statement, something I neglected to mention while I was up here before, I was actually at the water board yesterday, and the computer system was down. So is that an accident, or, you know, so just be mindful that, give yourself some le time to get this situation resolved. That being said, I'm here to talk about the HBCU College Tour, the Growing Forward College Tour, which is coming up April 13th to the 19th. This April 5th is the next and last workshop, which is the parent workshop. Of course, your children are going away, they're getting on the bus, so you need to meet the chaperones, and meet all the people that are involved that will be taking them on the college tour. And so just to reiterate, the college tour, the children are able to bring their resume, I mean, their transcripts, SAT scores, and they can go on a college tour and walk into a college and visit the administration and see all the necessary things that are needed for them to be admitted. We leave from Brooklyn, New York, we go all the way from New York to Atlanta, we, we visit 11 different schools in a week, quickly. We go to Morgan State University, Bowie State University, Howard University, Virginia State, Hampton University, North Carolina A&amp;T, North Carolina Central, Clark, Spelman, and Morehouse. There's a lot. So it's 11 schools in a week, I'm on the bus with kids for six days, and they're able to see their future and see what their, what their promise looks like, and what they can be, how they can be educated. And so with that being said, you know, it takes a lot for them to go on the bus, because you don't want to be with your parents looking over your shoulder when you're making a decision that is beneficial for your life. And your parents, your parents, your, your parents are, you're raising children, you're raising adults, not children. So with that being said, my time is up, and I thank you. And the website is growingforward, the word growing, the number four, W-A-R-D.org. So that's growingforward.org. Thank you.
There's a, over there she wants to speak to you, I guess.
I just want to know, how much does this cost for the service?
After, please talk after, this is announcements only.
Yeah, yeah, listen after, you could talk to him.
We have folks on Zoom, Jonathan, followed by Sabrina, Tesaria, and then Kamisha. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, excellent, good evening, Jonathan Pobosa, Brooklyn District Attorney, Eric Gonzalez's office, we have a Cash for Guns event, Saturday, April 5th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Cornerstone Baptist Church, 574 Madison Street, that's April 5th in Bed-Stuy at Cornerstone Baptist Church. And then on April 25th, we are participating in the prescription drug takeback at multiple sites throughout Brooklyn, including right there at Hope Gardens. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Sabrina?
Happy New Evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Lewis, I'm representing Haitian Census Council in Brooklyn, New York. We're located at 1491 Broadway. We have a new grant that's going to be catered to the LGBTQ+ community, I'm really excited about it. We're going to be having many different mental health programs where we have a waiting list already for individuals who are interested in joining our Be Well community. And if anyone is interested in anything that we offer, we have immigration services, ESL classes, we have a Fit BK program that happens at Flatlands Reform Church on the other side of Brooklyn. It's free Thursdays at 7:00 PM. We have a plethora of things happening. I can be reached at 718-940-2200, extension 124. If anyone wants to email me, my email address is slewishccinc@, oh, I'm sorry, it's slewishccinc.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sabrina, your connection was, thank you, your connection was unstable, if you can please drop that in the chat, because we did miss the contact information, but we have to move on, so please drop it in the chat.
Oh, no, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kamisha, you're next.
All right, thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Kamisha Superville, very delighted to be here with you. Should I continue?
Yeah, I mean, you have 20 seconds, we're counting the clock, only a minute and a half, so please summarize.
Delighted to be here with you, thank you for the opportunity. We are.
All right. Yeah, for whatever reason, the connection is not allowing us to hear you clearly, it's breaking up. If you can please just drop your information in the chat, we're happy to share anything afterwards. I also see Tesaria.
Hey there, Tesaria, Clean Bushwick Initiative, we're hosting a, another Repair Fest in Bushwick on Saturday, March 29th, 12 to 4:00 PM at Mayday Space. You can bring anything you need to get fixed, like sewing, electronics, woodworking, jewelry, all kinds of stuff, so would love to see you all there. I put the info in the chat.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else on Zoom, I don't see anyone in person. We're now going to move on to our second roll call, board members, please be ready. Jerry Valentine.
Present, good night, everybody.
Thank you, Jerry. Ben Tucker. Christian Tate. James Stewart. Annette Spellen. Milagro Sandoval. Elise Ruiz. Raul Rubio. Zuma Navoa. Freddie Madison. Christine Malden. Luisa Jose. Tara Jones Thomas. Vergi Jones. Kaysha Johnson. Barbara Jackson. Tanisha Hunnigan.
Present and good night.
Deborah Hicks. Gotcha, Tanisha, Deborah Hicks. Gotcha. Zachary Hendrickson. Anne Gynney. Christopher Graham. Jason, Jason Gears.
Here.
Joanna Fuentes Singh. Is excused. Freddie Fowler. Cecilia Fabian. Karina Dodd resigned. Alvinna Davis.
Present.
Andrew Troy. Felix Ceballos.
Felix Ceballos. Well, you gotta listen, you gotta talk, you gotta listen.
Robert Camacho.
Present.
Makiba Brona Lane. Joena Bennett. Stephanie Anderson. Isa Abni. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Annette Spellen makes a motion, Raul Rubio seconds.
All the favor. Any pro, any abstention? Motion carried.
9:03 PM, good night, everyone.
Take all your belongings, and if y'all want to talk, talk outside, because we gotta close this place down.